We can start.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. I mean, good morning. I'm starting out really well today. Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon. I want to welcome the Appropriations Committee and their visitors to the Public Hearing on the Governor's Proposed Budget for Higher Education Agencies. Tonight, we are, this afternoon, we're going to have something that we all look forward to. We have panels of students from different schools, higher education institutions here joining us to talk about their school, to talk about their experience, and to talk about what they really think we as legislators should be doing and helping them and assisting them. So I really am looking forward to that. So we have, we have five panels. We have eight panels.
We have ten panels.
We have ten panels. Oh, we have ten panels. And I'm looking forward to hearing from each one of them. I just want to remind our student participants that they have three minutes for, to give their, their, their study, I mean, their, their story. And the reason why we do that is because we have so many people that have to testify and say what they want and what's coming from their heart, but we want to make sure that everybody gets heard. Because after we hear from you, we have another forty-five people. And so if you multiply that by the number of minutes, we could be here for a long time. But it's more important we put you guys up first. So I thank that. Thank you for joining, and I thank you for participating. Okay, so let's start out. Senator Austin, would you like to say hello to the, the participants?
I would just like to say welcome. It's really a pleasure to have you all here today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let me see. Representative Hadad or Representative Minor or Mike France, Representative Hadad?
Senator Flexer, too.
And Senator Flexer, are any of them on?
I'm trying to resend the link to Representative Hadad.
Okay. Well, we're going to start, and I'm sure that they'll, they'll say hello to you at some point, once they get, once they join. So the first panel are independent colleges. So in our independent colleges panel, we have Jordan Harris from University of New Haven, Sam Majek from, Majek from University of St. Joseph, Sanya Khan from University of Hartford, Shayna Gelfond from Mitchell, and I can't, Tashana Joshua, I'm sorry if I'm butchering your names, from Albertus Magnus College. Go right ahead, Jordan. Jordan, are you here?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead, sir.
So my name is Jordan Harris, he/him/his pronouns. I'm a senior political science major with a minor in recent ethnic studies. I'm from Windsor, Connecticut, the first town in Connecticut. On campus, I'm the president of the University of New Haven Chapter of NAACP, and I currently intern in Congresswoman Delora's office in the New Haven district. So my experience on the University of New Haven campus has been rewarding. I've done a lot of things on campus, a lot of big things I'm proud of and will hopefully, like, keep those memories. And the financial aid such as the Roberta Willis Scholarship Grant has made it possible for, possible for me to enjoy my time on campus and be a successful student, because we know that financial aid is a big thing. And, you know, college is a business in a certain type of way, and for students, we have to find a way to pay for our schooling. So I'm really grateful for this grant and for the scholarship. It allows me to be on campus, not be stressed by where I'm, how I'm going to pay for the next semester. When I graduate, I intend to hopefully keep on the fight of racial justice and fighting on for equity for everybody, influence public policy as well. So please continue to fund the Roberta Willis Scholarship Program to ensure that students like myself have the opportunity to attend colleges in Connecticut. Thank you.
I'm doing, thank you, Jordan, and thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Sam Majek, Majek, Majek?
Magic, yeah, either way is good. Yeah, thank you. So hi, everyone. Yeah, I am Sam Majek. I'm from Brooklyn, Connecticut. I attend the University of St. Joseph in West Hartford, where I am a biology and chemistry double major. I'd first just like to take the opportunity to say thank you to everyone involved in this program and all the work that you do to help send students like us to college. Thank you. I knew St. Joseph was the right fit for me because I'm from Brooklyn, Connecticut. I wanted to stay in Connecticut, and I'm an athlete. So I play basketball at the University of St. Joseph. And when I saw that Coach Jim Calhoun would be leading a new men's basketball team there in high school, I figured that's where I want to go. And I'd love to get that opportunity. And I remember going home and looking up, you know, just the relative cost, and if it was something that I could afford. And being a private institution, it was a little out of my price range. But fortunately, because of the Roberta Willis Foundation, I was able to attend the university. And the experiences that I have had have just been so awesome. The classrooms are diverse. It's a small community. There's a ton of hands-on learning. And I get to stay home and play the game I love, basketball. And I heard there was an Albertus Magnus student in here who we beat last year in the conference finals. So I just thought I'd point that out. But especially during the COVID pandemic situation, I think we all realized how much of a gift it is to just be in person and be with one another and how I'm so grateful that St. Joseph's worked out for me because it's a small community. I love being with the people I see every day, and I couldn't be more thankful. And it wouldn't be possible without this Roberta Willis Scholarship. You know, I applied for private loans and wasn't a qualifier. So everything I do pay is out of pocket. And so this is a huge help for me and my family. When I graduate, I intend to do, go into dental school as a biology and chemistry major. And, you know, if I had to have traveled outside of Connecticut, I don't think I probably would have set up a practice or tried to work at a firm inside of Connecticut. I probably would have stayed where I went to college out of state. And so I'm thankful that I can stay in Connecticut and hopefully serve the people of Connecticut for years to come as a dentist one day. And I would just like to say again, thank you to all of those who helped out, fund students like myself, attend college, especially the Roberta Willis Scholarship Program. Please continue to fund us so students like me can get a great opportunity in life. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Sam. That was great. Thank you, and have a good afternoon.
You, too. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sana Khan, number three.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sana Khan. I'm from Steph, Maryland, Connecticut. I'm currently a sophomore at the University of Hartford, where I'm majoring in Bachelor of Science in Nursing. The University of Hartford was right fit for me because of the diverse student and faculty population and the small size of the campus. My family moved to the United States when I was eleven years old. Before moving to Connecticut, my family lived in Concord, New Hampshire. Throughout middle school and high school, I never felt like I fit in. My cousin and I stood out among the other students because we were the only students who wore the hijab. Many of my classmates didn't even know my name. They knew me by the girl who never shows her hair, the scar girl, the religious girl. I was constantly asked the same question over and over. Are you forced to cover your hair? What happens if I see your hair? Are you bald? Do you sleep with it? When looking to apply for college, I wanted to go somewhere that was small in size, that had diverse student population, a place where I didn't have to constantly explain myself, a place where I belong. At the University of Hartford, I've learned to embrace my religion and practice it without caring what others will think. I've made many incredible Muslim and non-Muslim friends who accept me for who I am. The members of Hughard go beyond their way to make sure their students are comfortable. I've never felt more at home than I do at the University of Hartford. I'm the first-generation student. I come from low-income family where my father is the only provider. Going to college had always been a dream of mine, but never had imagined it becoming a reality. It's because of scholarship, right, like the Roberta Willis Scholarship Grant, that I was able to attain my dream and have allowed me to dream bigger. When I graduate from college, I intend to work in the medical surgical nursing field for a new, for a few years. My plan is to then go back to school to earn my master's degree and achieve my overall goal of opening my practice someday. I request the committee to continue to fund Roberta Willis Scholarship Program to ensure that students like myself have the opportunity to enroll in the institution that's best fit for them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that, that testimony, and thank you for, for coming on and telling us all about your life. So thank you, and have a great day, and have a great success, too. Thanks. Next, we have Shayna Gelfond.
Hello, and I would just like to thank everyone for giving me this opportunity to speak on the Roberta Willis Scholarship today. So as previously stated, my name is Shayna Gelfond, and I'm from Norwich, Connecticut. I'm currently a senior at Mitchell College, and I study business administration. At Mitchell College, I participate in the National Honor Society Club, as I am as well a member. Mitchell was the right fit for me because I can learn and understand classes better due to the student-professor, professor ratios. We really get that one-on-one time. My experience at Mitchell College has been nothing but extraordinary. Financial aid such as the Roberta Willis Scholarship Program has been incredibly important to me because of the financial stress it relieves. Especially during COVID, financial aid means that I have one less bill to worry about during these tough times. When I graduate, I intend to take on a part-time job in business administration while going to school for my MBA in business administration as well. Please continue to fund the Roberta Willis Scholarship Program to ensure students like myself have the opportunity to enroll in the institution that is best fit for them in state. Once again, I would like to thank everyone that participates in the Roberta Willis Scholarship Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for participating tonight, and good luck. Next, we have Tashana Joshua. Is that it? Did I do it okay?
My name is Tashana Joshua. I'm originally from the Twin Island Federation of St. Getz and Nevis. I moved to New Haven, Connecticut when I was fourteen. Moving from a small island high school to a large public high school was not an easy transition. I was used to uniforms, smaller, smaller class sizes, and small-town environment. I began my education in Connecticut at James Lewis High School, and probably graduated with honors. I am currently a second-year student at Albertus Magnus College, majoring in healthcare management. Albertus was the right fit for me because while I applied for schools, it was important for me that I attend an institution that is small but diverse. This was also, this also allowed me to focus on my studies and create a close relationship with my professors, which was something that I was missing. As a student who immigrated from the Caribbean, I also sought a diverse campus to help my transition smoother. My experience at Albertus has been very refreshing. The community is very friendly and welcoming. When I moved to campus, it was my first time being on my own and away from my family. The family-oriented energy at Albertus made the transition smoother than I could, that I could have imagined. Financial aid, including the Roberta B. Willis Scholarship, has been incredibly important to me. This scholarship has helped to take some of the burden off my shoulders and create an opportunity for me to not borrow an additional loan and even put more financial stress on my parents. With the Roberta B. Willis Scholarship, I am able to focus more on my academics and future career plans instead of antagonizing over how will I pay for tuition, or even scarier, pay for student loans. Financial aid has played an even bigger role in my life during this pandemic. My family is facing an even harder time where funding is concerned. The tuitional aid I received through Albertus, as well as their Roberta B. Willis Scholarship, has even, has helped to play, has helped to lessen our financial burden during these uncertain times. Graduation is still two years away, so I have plenty of time to, to figure out what exactly do I want to do when I graduate. What I do know is that Albertus will have helped me to prepare once I officially made the decision. Please continue to refund, to fund the Roberta B. Willis Scholarship Program to ensure that students like myself have the opportunity to enroll and succeed at the college that is best fit for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joshua, and thank you for that testimony. You did a great job. Thank you. Have great success.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Okay, next, we will start our next panel of.
We are running a little early, but luckily, panel number two are all here, so we are going to let them into, into.
Okay.
Thank you.
Eddie, let us know when we're ready.
Everybody's in the panel now.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Eddie. And I want to thank the, the staff totally for, for being able to handle all of these, these participants tonight. That's, that, that's a lot. I know that. And we, we need to appreciate that more than we say all the time. Okay, panel two. Panel two is from UConn. We have, we have Michael Hernandez, Laura Bedoya, Damani Douglas, and Janoy Williams. Michael Hernandez, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Chair Austin, Chair Walker, Vice Chairs, ranking members, and distinguished members of the committee. My name is Michael Hernandez, and I am honored to be a student at UConn and serve as the current student body president. Three years ago, I was one of dozens of undocumented students speaking before many of you in support of the Afford to Dream Act, which passed and gave me the opportunity to attend UConn. Today, I am testifying in strong support of investing in Connecticut students like myself by restoring much-needed funding to UConn in the coming fiscal years. My journey to UConn was unlikely. As an undocumented ten-year-old from Honduras moving to Stanford in 2008, the path to college and career was always uncertain. However, I was always certain that my supportive Stanford community would take me to supportive places like UConn, where I, I'm currently pursuing a dual degree in the honors program in political science and economics. My professors, mentors, and fellow students have supported my research, my studies, and participation in the Newman Civic Fellowship, the Public Policy and International Affairs Program at Carnegie Mellon, and the University of Miami Law School Summer Legal Academy. I have brought these experiences back to Stanford and applied them by designing a community project and securing funding to increase enrollment in the city's Advanced Placement Program by contributing to the city's census count in 2020 and other efforts related to education accessibility, civic engagement, and urban development. My senior thesis will focus on the politics and economics of urban development in Stanford from 1960 to 2020. My academic journey is inextricably linked to the journey of Stanford and now the journey of the state. I plan on living in Stanford the rest of my life. I have been supported as a student by the city and the state, so I know that I will be supported as a resident, as a worker, and as a father in the future. Every time the state has invested in UConn, we have seen tangible results, such as historic application records, increases in research and scholarship, our first world scholar, and I can proudly say that I am UConn's first non-citizen student body president. These and other accomplishments at UConn have restored Connecticut residents' faith in the economic future and development of the state. Today, the state must restore funding to UConn to ensure that future. Thank you for supporting my journey to UConn, and I strongly urge all committee members to support the journey of all future Connecticut students by restoring funding to UConn. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you for, for letting us know what great investments you are going to give back to the state. So thank you for that. Have a good evening and good success to you. Next, we have Laura, Laura Bedoya. Laura? Go right ahead.
Good evening. Good evening. I hope you're all doing well, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Laura Bedoya. I'm from East Haven, Connecticut. I'm an undergraduate student studying political science and Latin American studies. I am also in the Masters of Public Administration Fast Track Program at the University of Connecticut. I am the proud daughter of Colombian immigrants who instilled in me the importance of education. As a first-generation college student, being in my final semester holds a lot of sentiment as it is the realization of both my personal dream and my family's dream. I was accepted as a part of Student Support Services, known as SSS, which is a program that serves first-generation, low-income, and underrepresented college students. SSS prepared me academically and professionally. It even allowed me to discover my second major in Latin American studies. The University of Connecticut has given me so many opportunities to become a student leader and get involved with initiatives that build my skills as a part of a wider Latino student network on campus through the Puerto Rican Latin American Cultural Center, also known as PRLAC, and El Instituto. In PRLAC, I served as the cultural representative between the Colombian Student Association and the Latinx Student Leadership Council. While at El Instituto, I was able to be a research volunteer in drafting policy blueprints on education for Latinos in Connecticut. The University of Connecticut has also provided me with many opportunities to build my research and advocacy skills. In 2019, I, I won the Bold Woman's Leadership Network Scholarship, which focuses on facilitating opportunities for women leadership on campus through the scholarship funding, programming, and engagement in service and leadership projects. The Bold Scholarship has supported my senior thesis titled Gender Equity and Political Participation in Colombia. Bold allowed me to design and execute my own research project and combine my passion for research and advocacy, paving the way for my graduate studies in public administration at UConn. I have been reflecting a lot on my experiences and opportunities that UConn has given me. All of the communities at UConn that I have shared with you today, Student Support Services, the Puerto Rican Latin American Cultural Center, El Instituto, and the Bold Women's Leadership Network have invested in my academic, personal, and professional life. In reality, a culture of giving always inspires a culture of giving back. Thank you for supporting UConn. As Connecticut's only public research institution, it is important and necessary to support diversity, maintain the university's affordability, access, while also maintaining and expanding research development. Your community, your commitment to funding our university supports students like me in achieving our dreams, which also allows us to give back to our communities. Thank you for granting me the space to share my story.
Thank you. Thank you for your, for your testimony, and thank you for your hard work. Have a great evening and enjoy school, and you're doing great. Thank you. Have a good evening. Bye-bye. Next, Damani Douglas.
Good afternoon, Chair Walker, Chair Austin, Representative Hadad, and Senator Flexer, distinguished members of the committee. Thank you for having me with you today. My name is Damani Douglas. I am a junior studying political science and communication at the University of Connecticut, and I currently serve the student body in the undergraduate student government as its chief diversity officer. For, I'd like to take a moment to tell you a little bit about what that diversity means and how this committee has contributed to that. So when, when I'm not at school, I live not far from the Capitol in West Hartford. And for middle school, I went to the local middle school there, where I was one of only a few black students. In my time at that middle school, there wasn't much that was notable happen. My experience wasn't fantastic. It wasn't terrible, but it was certainly formative. I remember for a period of time in sixth grade, the school rolled out a Boyd program, a Bring Your Own Device. The idea was to help bring technology into the classroom. Most of my peers, myself included, did bring technology into the classroom, a laptop from home, something like that. For high school, I opted to go to a different kind of high school. I went to a public magnet school. And this school also had a laptop program, but it was a very different one. It was one where the laptops were provided to the students by the school instead. This laptop program was not the only difference between these two schools. There was a stark difference in the racial makeup of these schools and a significant difference in the socioeconomic backgrounds of these students. This was the first time that I had a class with more than two other black students. For the first time, I had a teacher ask the class if everyone had a reliable internet connection, and one of my peers answered no. For the first time, I met people who shared my racial identity, but who came from home environments that were radically different from my own. That experience changed a lot for me, but it only happened when it happened because I chose to go to a magnet school for high school. Many of my peers continued in that same local town school and so did not get that experience, which brings me to UConn. UConn is a place where you can't assume anything about anyone's identity until they tell you, whether that's race, gender, religion, socioeconomic background. UConn mixes so many people with so many different identities together in a way that makes us all stronger. All of that is only possible with the, with your support. It is that support and the support of this committee and the legislature that enables all of these people to come together. The dollars that the General Assembly sends to UConn mean that so many of the students, students like myself, who never had another peer of color in their classes, or students not like themselves, who simply only sought people who looked like them in their classes. It allows those people to go to UConn and experience a true diverse environment and learn in a way that is not replicable anywhere else. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Have a good day. Next, we have Janoy Williams.
Thank you, Representative Walker. My name is Janoy Williams. I want to thank you all for taking the time out to hear me speak, and I definitely want to thank you to, you know, for all the support that you've provided to UConn. I'm a graduate student. I'm a student entrepreneur, currently pursuing my MBA. I work full-time at Pratt &amp; Whitney. This is my second graduate degree with UConn. I can't stay away. You know, kind of hearing, sitting here and hearing all the stories of all the other panelists allows me to reflect a lot of what UConn has meant to me. I also came to this country as an immigrant from Jamaica. I actually grew up in Florida. I went to school in Pennsylvania my undergraduate and ended up in Connecticut about seven years ago, and it's changed my life. While in Connecticut, I've had the opportunities to volunteer with some amazing organizations, and I had the opportunity to go back to school by do of my, my employer. This past year, I've been able to launch my business, which is a nonprofit named Juneddy, and essentially, it is a nonprofit that assists underprivileged youth to get connected to resources locally to them. There's a huge issue that we have identified with youth not being connected to resources and not exploring their passions. And unfortunately, there's a lot of youth flight in Connecticut, and this is a great state. And UConn absolutely promotes this. UConn has given us the, the confidence and given us the financial support and the mentorship to take our business to the next level. We've been constantly advocated for with UConn. We've been awarded some great mentorship opportunities. And fortunately for me, I'm now in a position where I'm thinking about leaving my job full-time to pursue this nonprofit, to pursue my passion. My passion is helping out the youth, and UConn is clearly invested in that. And my job is to ensure that youth explore their passion, and I think Connecticut needs an opportunity for youth to have a voice and give back to their community. And that's what Juneddy is all about, and UConn fully supports Juneddy in that capacity. So I want to thank you guys again for the opportunity to speak, and that's all.
Thank you, Juneddy. I like that. I like that. That sounds good. We have to look that one up. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for testifying, and good luck with it. Okay?
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, so now we are up to panel number three. Madam Administrator?
Are, are they? They are all in, Madam Chair, now.
Okay, great. So let us begin. These are from Connecticut State Universities. Number ten, Will Stanton.
Hello there, members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is William Stanton. I'm a sophomore nursing major at Western Connecticut State University, and I'm here to ask you support for funding community colleges and universities. At WCSU, before COVID, I was actively involved in campus life. I used to go to many on-campus events, and I was also a senator in the Student Government Association, as well as an RA in my second year as a freshman, well, second semester as a freshman. And besides that, like many of my colleagues at the university, I worked a second job at a restaurant bakery, which closed during the pandemic. But now I'm living from home, trying to make ends meet, and I've had to adjust to a whole new set of challenges. And the same goes for many of my colleagues. On top of, with tackling the fallout of the pandemic, it started with trying to figure out the new platforms which we were learning on, which even still rears its head to this day. Our work was disrupted, in my case, with all that. Oh, I'm sorry. I stutter a lot. My apologies.
Don't, don't make any apologies. You do, you're doing great. Go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Um, well, um, my apologies. I lose my train of thought. It's, I'm a terrible public speaker, so. But hopefully, I'll get better.
You're doing a really good job. I've heard terrible speakers. You're not, you're not in that category. You're doing a good job.
Thank you so much. Um, but this, I'll continue. Sorry, my apologies. But this doesn't address how the pandemic affects home lives with students being torn back into their families from being at university, which I know plenty of students at the university had to go home and are still home at this point, which certainly adds to a whole new set of challenges with being home. which certainly adds to a whole new set of challenges with being home. From finding new work to trying to figure out schedules with families and effectively and trying to learn in a proper manner that allows them to get the full use out of the education they deserve with all the scholarships that they are provided from the state and from FAFSA and so on. But for these reasons, I encourage prioritization of funding to colleges and universities to help effectively adapt to these new challenges with personal protective equipment and so on. And technologies allow students to learn effectively from home during this time in this hybrid format. And thank you. I appreciate the opportunity of speaking.
Thank you so much, Will. You did fantastic. You really did. And trust me, you are a public speaker because you spoke from your heart. So thank you so much. Okay, next, we have Megan Baker. Megan?
Hello, members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Megan Baker. I am a second-year graduate student pursuing my master's in political science at Southern Connecticut State University. And I am here with you today to share my personal narrative in an effort to relay the importance of funding in higher education. My Filipino grandfather immigrated to the US as a young single father with my mother and her three brothers. And growing up, my Lolo often shared with me the multitude of adversities he faced as he forged a path on this new frontier fueled by the prospect that doing so would secure a better life for his children and their future. But every obstacle that threatened to stymie my progress, he would tell me, paled in comparison to the abhorrent poverty, heinous corruption, and exorbitant level of unemployment under Ferdinand Marcos. And above all else, he emphasized the privilege I held as a natural-born citizen in a country where I could speak out against injustices in a capacity not available in every other country. And he always told me that with education and passion, seeking the betterment of one's country and the world around them are the utmost displays of patriotism. I became the embodiment of my grandfather's aspirations when I received the opportunity to attend Southern with the financial assistance of a state-funded Presidential Merit Scholarship, enabling me to receive a college education without the financial struggle that my mom had faced 30 years prior when she applied to undergraduate institutions. Inspired by these stories relayed to me during my upbringing, I dedicated my collegiate career to studying policy using legislative approaches to alleviating socioeconomic ailments in an intersectional and multifaceted capacity. Further state funding allotted to higher education granted me the opportunity to attend graduate school on a scholarship at Southern, where I concurrently expanded my breadth of knowledge and worked in a position where I increased civic engagement and political participation on my campus. Southern equipped me with the educational tools and skills that I plan to then reinvest back into the state. Upon graduation, I hope to work in a state office researching current and potential policy initiatives, measuring their prospective and retrospective impacts, all in an effort to assist Connecticut in cultivating the best environment for its residents. I lost my grandfather late last fall, but even in his absence, the truth in his teachings remain. Education, passion, and a little bit of nurturing are all you need to change the world around you, which is why public funding for higher education should not be regarded so finitely in budget numbers and dollar amounts. My narrative and the narratives of those also speaking today are a microcosm of the realities of our peers, the scholars of our state schools. Properly fostering the educational growth of the next generation should be considered an investment, not just in the singular future of any given student, but in Connecticut's future as well. So please continue investing in students, in students like me, because they will play a vital role in the state's future success, and they understand the value of reinvesting in the community that provided them with the ability to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. That was wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you for telling us about your grandfather. Really, that was wonderful. Thank you. Next, we have Karen Torres.
Good afternoon. Thank you. So, good afternoon, members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Karina Torres, and I am a Health and Physical Education major at Eastern Connecticut State University. I'm also a Student Government Association representative and as well as a resident assistant here. For as long as I remember, I've always wanted to be a resident assistant and make campus life as exciting and engaging as my previous resident assistants have done before me. When I was granted the opportunity to become an RA, I never thought that I would have to do so during a pandemic. COVID has certainly presented a wide variety of challenges that I felt were almost nearly impossible to overcome. I was faced with several challenges both academically and in my leadership positions. However, with continuing support from the university, I have never felt more sure of my ability to succeed and create a valuable campus experience and community within my residence hall. I will make note that this isn't something that I could do alone. Eastern continues to play an active role in campus life and continuously communicates information about events, important notices, reopenings, and more. Additionally, they listen to student concerns presented to them through the Student Government Association and provide resolutions, some things that I am proud to say I have been a part of. However, all these efforts are not possible because of continued, are possible, sorry, because of continued financial support from the legislature. Without this, I would not be able to host COVID-friendly programs that get students excited about the potential for future in-person events. I would not be able to get a quality in-person educational experience that I came here for. I would not be able to say that Eastern continues to support us through these dark times if it were not for the support in public health education, public higher education. If we are to ever think about returning to some sort of normal, it is important to note that it is not possible without the financial support from you all. I want to continue making these differences on campus. I want to see the community thriving once again. I want to be able to graduate alongside my friends and say we got through all this together. I urge you to please continue to support us so that I can continue to do my part, as well as other students can continue doing theirs in strengthening the campus community. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for that testimony. Thank you very much, and have a successful year. Bye bye. Next, we have Cameron Clark.
Hello, Chairwoman Walker, Senator Austin, and esteemed members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Cameron Clark. I am a history major and political science minor in my senior year at Central Connecticut State University. And I'm here today to ask you to prioritize increased funding for our colleges. As a student who took dual enrollment classes in high school and then attended both Manchester Community College and CCSU, I have had the opportunity to see firsthand the benefits of increased access to and funding for higher education throughout the Connecticut system. Through day-to-day academic life and extracurricular involvement, I have had the privilege of interacting with students from countless walks of life, many of whom rely on the support of the members of this committee and your colleagues in the state legislature at large to allow them to pursue their goals of achieving an education befitting of the 21st century. Without the continued and increased support of your committee, many of these individuals would have been unable to make ends meet and as such would have been deprived of such an opportunity. As many of you know, the reliable and thorough funding of equitable admission opportunities is only one part of the puzzle for higher education funding. The services provided for students ranging from superior technical support in and out of the classroom to mental and physical health counseling, to on-ground funding for extracurriculars all play an indispensable role in benefiting the students, not just at CCSU, but at all of Connecticut's colleges and universities. And cuts to any of these areas would prove a detriment to the lifeblood of our institutions. Rather, as the ongoing pandemic has revealed, all of these services are more essential than ever before. And simply funding them to existing levels while acceptable for a more ordinary year would be a disservice to the students. As many of the esteemed members of this committee are aware, this pandemic has brought to light inherent shortcomings across the board, many of which lay unaddressed for years. In order to help Connecticut build back better, this committee must keep an eye on the future for our colleges in terms of not just more equitable funding and enrollment, but also for a funding of a myriad of technical and student support services, which have been indispensable during the circumstances of largely online education over the last year. I, like many of my peers who have spoken already, can attest to the fact that the services of our colleges have been strained by this pandemic. And in order to maintain the proud history of Connecticut's universities as a model for the nation, this committee must double down on providing for the services and the students of Connecticut's colleges so that we may in turn provide for the state's future. I thank the esteemed members of this committee for this opportunity to address them, and I trust our colleges will be able to rely on your continued support and priority funding.
Thank you, Cameron. And with testimonies like yours, I think you've got a good shot at that. I think all of the students especially, all of you are doing a great job in talking to us about your story and why it's important for us to make you our investment. So thank you. All right, that brings us to the end of panel three, and I want to now call up panel four.
They're all here, Madam.
Thank you, sir. You're doing a great job. You're keeping me on my toes. Okay. Number 14, Christopher Wiles. From, this is UConn Health, UConn Health. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Dr. Chris Wiles. I'm originally from New London, Connecticut, and am currently an Anesthesiology resident at the University of Connecticut. UConn Health has 789 residents who train and provide patient care throughout 28 communities across the state. The UConn residency programs are critical to ensuring a future medical and dental workforce in our state and bringing additional Medicare reimbursement revenues to Connecticut. When COVID started, I was in the emergency department. We had the PPE we needed while other hospitals did not, thanks to the exemplary planning and the necessary resources to take appropriate actions. For example, triage protocols used outdoor tents for screening, and patients who ended up in the ICU were well cared for. I'm proud to be here today to represent UConn Health, whose response to the pandemic exemplifies its commitment to the well-being of patients, staff, and our community at large. UConn Health treats its patients with empathy and respect, as do many excellent hospitals. But what sets it apart from others is how it has proven itself during difficult times. I'll briefly tell you how UConn supported me personally recently. I have a unique skill set outside of medicine involving 3D design and 3D printing. UConn supported my efforts to lead a group of volunteers in alternative PPE research and production for last resort scenarios. UConn had a stockpile of 40,000 unusable N95s that our team found a way to reinforce and make usable thanks to a plastic face frame we created with a multidisciplinary team of volunteers. UConn's ability to secure resources and think outside the box resulted in good patient care and commendable safety of staff. It was impressive that so many people throughout the UConn community were willing to assist us to make sure we had adequate PPE. However, none of this would have been possible without the necessary financial support from the state. I strongly urge you to continue providing the funding required to best treat Connecticut's patients, many of whom are underserved, as well as to take care of our community and state, both during the pandemic and under normal circumstances. UConn had the resources to support its employees during the pandemic, but needs continued funding to stay the premier institution that it is today. I'm proud to represent the University of Connecticut and ask you to continue making UConn's success possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Thank you for your testimony, and that sounds incredible, your personal business, the business that you created. That sounded great. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Next, we have Maria Elena Navado.
Hi, can you hear me?
Did I say, yes, did I say that right?
Yeah, Maria Elena Navado.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Walker, Chair Haddad, ranking, community committee members and others for holding this hearing and for allowing my written testimony to be included. Thank you to the General Assembly for your past support of UConn Health's budget. My name is Elena Navado, and I'm a second-year medical student at the University of Connecticut School of Medicine, and I live at 4R Staunton Court. I would like to take a brief moment to explain how funding for UConn Health has allowed the University of Connecticut School of Medicine to support me as I studied to become a physician, and a few of the ways that through this financial support, Connecticut will benefit from this investment in its medical students. What first drew me to UConn School of Medicine was the welcoming culture that I saw here that I hadn't seen at other schools. When I came to interview, it was through the Health Career Opportunities Program, H-COP, that I was invited to meet with a then-first-year Puerto Rican student who is Puerto Rican like I am. I was struck that H-COP will go out of their way to pair me with a medical student that I could identify with. This attention to community, along with UConn's innovative and high-quality curriculum, led me to choose UConn School of Medicine over my other options. Now, as a second-year medical student at UConn, my colleagues and I have already begun to give back to the community that has supported us so much. As co-president of the Latino Medical Student Association, when the COVID-19 pandemic began, LMSA hosted a number of events to support the student body, as well as Connecticut at large. COVID-19 has disproportionately affected Black and Brown communities, and so LMSA recently hosted a phone-a-thon in mid-January to support State Senator Saud Anwar's bill to declare racism a public health crisis. On January 13, over 190 phone calls were made to state senators and representatives in support of this bill. It might seem slightly off-topic for a budget hearing on UConn Health to be talking about this, but if it were not for the support and resources we received as medical students from our school, we truly wouldn't have had the bandwidth to take on this additional work for our great state of Connecticut. I also participated in the Urban Service Tracks Calling Campaign to survey Spanish-speaking senior citizens for access to resources and healthcare during the pandemic. In conclusion, the University of Connecticut School of Medicine, and by extension, the Health Career Opportunities Program and UST, is putting in the work necessary to support the next generation of diverse physicians that will care for our communities for years to come. This work requires funding in order to accomplish our ambitious goals, and I humbly request that the General Assembly move to continue or increase support for UConn Health and the University of Connecticut School of Medicine. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for remembering that you came from somewhere, so you have to give back to your community. Thank you, and have a good afternoon. Thanks. Next, Hamza Quadri.
Hello, hi. My name is Hamza Codri, and I'm a first-year dental student here at UConn Dental. I would first like to start off by thanking the General Assembly's past and continued support. Being the voice of the dental class through my position as a dental vice president for the Medical Dental Student Government, I felt as though it is my obligation to represent my colleagues and this incredible institution. I myself am a double husky, earning my bachelor's of science in biology last year in May, and now here I am at UConn Health as I'm pursuing my dream to become a clinician. I was born in Karachi, Pakistan, and early in childhood, my parents made the decision to migrate to the United States. When we migrated to Stanford, Connecticut, my father was a breadwinner as he worked tirelessly to financially support the household. And my amazing mother was a homemaker who nurtured my siblings and me to become the best versions of ourselves in every single aspect of our lives. Attending the University of Connecticut for undergrad, and now UConn Dental for professional school, these opportunities allowed my parents' dreams to come into fruition. They sacrificed everything they had for my education, and this wonderful institution has supported me as I continue on my journey to provide the best care to my future patients. During my undergraduate career at Storrs, UConn allowed me to make unforgettable memories that I will forever cherish. I've only been at UConn Dental for barely a year, but I've matured immensely in such little time. To be quite honest, the biomedical curriculum challenges me mentally and emotionally. But being a student here is a privilege and an honor that very few people in the world have, and every day I am thankful to be here. This past year, as everyone who hasn't been living under a rock knows, has been extremely difficult and challenging. Our lives have completely changed, probably forever. However, it is now more than ever that I'm proud to say that I'm part of the healthcare community. When I first started at UConn Dental in August 2020, I was a bit skeptical about online learning. How was I supposed to become a doctor through my laptop? Despite my initial skepticism about virtual learning, and now that I am more than halfway done with my first year, I can say that UConn has done a wonderful job in adapting their curriculum so our education is not compromised. From our dense medical physiology classes where we learn about human body systems and diseases, to our anatomy labs, all the way to our dental classes, I feel as though our education is up to par and even better than those students that came for me. The faculty at UConn Health has done an exceptional job in preparing us for our future roles as healthcare professionals. After receiving my DMD, I hope to complete a residency in oral and maxillofacial surgery, and I aspire to continue working in Connecticut to return the favor to the state that has granted me immense favors. This institution is continuing to fulfill my dreams beyond my imaginations. I hope you continue to support UConn Health so that dreamers like myself and everyone that I interact with at this incredible institution continue dreaming high as we serve the residents of Connecticut. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony. Good luck with dental school. Thank you. Next, Shavan Patel. Seven?
Yep, Shavan. Yeah, so my name is Shavan Patel, and I'm a first-year medical student at UConn School of Medicine. I thank you all for your continued support of UConn and the UConn Health Center. And it's really your support that makes beautiful stories possible, and I would like to share mine with you today. So I lived in India for most of my childhood before my family moved to South Windsor, Connecticut in 2013. before my family moved to South Windsor, Connecticut in 2013, when I was fourteen years old. So, I had just moved to the United States. I was a lost immigrant who had difficulty navigating my new environment and the new school system. I was extremely shy, had very little confidence in my abilities, and was unsure about my place in my new community. Thanks to Yukon, today I am a completely different person. My experiences as a double husky, first at the undergraduate institution at STORES and now here at Medical School in Farmington, have ingrained in me some very fundamental values that will help me become the physician I want to become. And these are healthy collaboration, advocacy, and leadership. I'm eternally grateful for having the privilege of attending school at the School of Medicine, which has provided me with the most enriching medical education I could have ever imagined. So, apart from the amazing team-based learning curriculum, that's really a representation of the future of medicine, which is increasingly team-based. I have received a lot of incredible support in my short stay here at Yukon as a first-year student that I would like to talk about. So, as the president of the Medical and Dental Student Government, I can attest to the incredible support students receive from the administration and the school in ensuring that we have the opportunities to excel as well as the support to thrive mentally in a traditionally very stressful career. So, one example is that the university has given me the platform to directly care for the underserved communities of Yukon, of Connecticut, through the Urban Service Track, which supplements the clinical knowledge that I learned in class with firsthand experiences in serving the vulnerable patient population. And for an aspiring physician who aspires to practice in Connecticut, having these opportunities this early as a medical student really helps with the well-rounded education that medical students should have, which is rarely seen at other institutions, to have this clinical experience this early and the ability to serve the community that has built me in my time here in the United States. Another example of the incredible support students receive here, which is made possible through the funding that we receive, is the emphasis on wellness, student wellness, in a traditionally stressful career. So, as a passionate advocate of mental health in the medical field, I have received incredible support in being able to channel that passion and starting a chapter of a national nonprofit organization known as Medical Minds Matter. And this organization really aims to transform the narrative surrounding the stigma that exists in mental health, especially in the medical field. And just as a first-year medical student, being able to go through the stressors of medical school and be able to, you know, bloom into this confident person that I would not have imagined in 2014 is a testament to the incredible support that we receive as students here. And I would just like to thank all the members of the Appropriations Committee for your continued support, and I hope you continue supporting our programs and our institution, so other beautiful stories like mine can be possible in the future. I thank you all for the time.
Thank you, Patel. Mr. Patel, thank you very much for your testimony, and I like that term, double husky. I like that. I haven't heard that one. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful year and have a good evening. Thank you for testifying. Okay, so that is the end of our panel four. The next panel, panel five, are the community colleges.
They are all here, manager.
They are all here. Great. Alright, first, we have Naomi Benningfield from Tungusis Community College.
Good evening, and thank you for having me today. So, my name is Naomi Benningfield, and I am currently majoring in early childhood education at Tungusis Community College. I am the founder and the president of International Outreach Club and the vice president of Phi Theta Kappa. Due to my father serving in the military, I've been living a nomadic lifestyle. So, I've been constantly moving from place to place, from countries as far as South Korea to states such as Idaho. With each move, I had to go back to the drawing board and readjust my plans to reach my future goals. I want to become a child psychologist because I want to help each child grow to have a meaningful and successful life. However, this path seemed to be difficult because with every move, I had to meet new teachers, make new friends, and put my best effort in to catch up with the rest of the students. This was exasperating, especially upon coming to the middle or the end of a school semester, and which people would ask me, "Why do you even try?" And I would reply that every obstacle is a challenge that motivates me to try harder, and if I give up now, I'll never get to where I want to be. Tungusis Community College has drilled this growth mindset into me and has become my extended family. The encouraging and supportive staff members have pushed me to want to better myself, use my capabilities to bring awareness towards social issues, and be a hard-working member of my community. Changes in life is always a guarantee, but here in Tungusis, I was able to build solid relationships with those around me that have helped me grow personally. I have come to accept vulnerability, in which Brene Brown states, "is the gateway for opportunities and novel experiences, or the birthplace of innovation, creativity, and change." I've been able to come into contact with like-minded students and have come together with them to create a club that we call International Outreach. We provide members with opportunities to raise funds, spread awareness towards international issues, and grow in our leadership, communication, and critical thinking skills while helping others around the world. Seeing the diversity and the inclusiveness that our campus holds is truly inspiring. I see it myself as a teacher assistant at a local preschool. The parents or the grandparents who are dropping off their children also attend Tungusis. The flexibility that our community college provides allows students to work off of campus, maintain family obligations, and stay close to home. Our campus provides students with information for job opportunities off and on campus, and they also assist with mock interviews, writing resumes, and abundance of knowledge. I come from a large family, which is lively, but it also means that I need assistance with funding. And Tungusis has been a blessing to me through providing a surplus of information on scholarships and assistance for financial aid. And they are also supportive of my family's military lifestyle through the Veterans Oasis. This is an outstanding example of how community colleges are there to support family and individuals from the military. Our college and its staff members have been quick to adapt to the COVID pandemic. Tutoring sessions are always available, professors are easy to reach out to, and communication is strong. They work fluently and effectively as they strive to ensure that the students are on the path to success. I was nervous about heading into an online classroom, but the availability of support helped ease my mind. There's always an understanding and motivating presence both off and online that encourages students to intensely focus on their goals while knowing that they have a hand to help guide them. Community colleges are extraordinary places, filled of staff who are attuned to the needs of their students, and this will always be a part of my extended family, and I am honored to be a part of life here at Tungusis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Naomi, and have a wonderful rest of the semester, and thank you for testifying. Lilia Burdo.
Good evening, members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Lilia Burdo. I'm from Norwich in the Tenbury Rivers Community College. I'm in my second semester with my major being liberal arts and sciences, but I plan to pursue secondary English education in the long run, and I'm here today to advocate for PACT funding. Before I even applied to college, I set a goal to graduate with as little debt as possible. Attending a community college does promote financial responsibility, so Tenbury Rivers was a great option. But once I heard that PACT was going through, it was a no-brainer to attend. Now, to pursue secondary English education, I'm going to have to transfer to a state school. And state schools are not exactly the most cheap. I know as soon as I transfer, tuition's going to skyrocket, textbook prices are going to increase. I'm also going to have to seriously consider whether commuting will be best for me or living on campus. And with PACT, I can really think about these financial decisions now while still earning my associate's degree. While earning my associate's degree, I'm able to save my money, which will be put towards my future education, which is required for my career goal. There are also a lot of students that cannot afford college straight out of high school, especially just straight out of pocket. There are some students that may need to take a gap year or semester off, and I'm not really sure the statistics. But I do know that it seems that people that take some time off to earn some money to attend college actually don't tend to pursue their education further on in life. There are also students who have families that may have a difficult situation, such as like a medical situation or a certain life circumstance that makes their financial situation a bit more difficult to pay for education. For example, my mother was diagnosed with breast cancer. There are families out there who also have parents that may be laid off due to COVID, furloughed. There are families that also don't receive financial assistance, even though it really would be appreciated in this kind of needed. As well as, quite frankly, there are parents who just aren't willing to pay for their children's education, and that could be for a variety of reasons. It could be because they have multiple kids in the family and they can't afford to help pay for all of their tuition. It could also just be that their parents want to promote financial responsibility and give them some independence. No matter the situation, whatever it may be, students who attend college are likely to end up in debt. And with PACT, financial responsibility is promoted, as well as it's a safety net for all situations, all type of situations. So, PACT is allowing me to work towards my financial goals of minimizing my debt, as well as my educational goals by allowing me to attend college now, continue my studies, and not have to take that gap year, save my money to put it towards my future education. So, I hope that any PACT funding issues may be resolved because I do know family and friends who are in high school now, and it would mean a great deal to me if they could have the same exact amazing financial opportunity that I have today. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Lilia, for your testimony, and good luck with school for the semester. You did great. Thank you. Next, we have Kyo Tour.
Always, I always laugh because I always, I feel bad. I've had struggles with my name.
Please say your. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
It's Kotar Tayubi Aladracy. I go by K for short, just to make everybody's life easier. So, yes, so thank you, members of the. Oh, boy.
Appropriations.
Thank you. Okay, so my name is Kotar Tayubi Aladracy. I'm a single mom. I work as a recruiter at a life insurance company. I'm a student at Middlesex Community College, and I am majoring in social work. So, coming to America at the age of twelve years old, from Casablanca, Morocco, being homesick and an illegal immigrant, not speaking a word of English, yet all I was determined to do is to reach the American dream. Throughout the years, I had to put myself last to help others in my life that needed me. Had to face many roadblocks and challenges that did not allow me to finish school. Last year, when the pandemic started, I had an eye-opening moment. Just when everyone's doors were closing due to the pandemic, Middlesex Community College opened its doors to me. I was able to ask questions and get answers. I was able to fit right in without feeling intimidated. I felt safe to share my stories without being judged. And overall, I had hoped to become an example for my kids' future. Suffering from anxiety myself, Middlesex Community College offers a wide range of help regarding the mental health and overall well-being to its students. That meant a lot to me. Whether it was virtually or on campus, I could join mostly every event about mental health and spread the word to help others. I have been at Middlesex for nearly two semesters so far, with straight A's and being a member of the Senate Student Secretary. I am proud that I'm a community college student. I'd like to ask the legislators at this committee to continue your support for all our community colleges because it enabled me to thrive on being the person I am today. I hope that you can make sure that our next generation of students has the same support and opportunities to succeed like I have. Thank you.
Thank you. That was fantastic. And how old, one child, two?
Two. I don't know if you can hear them in the background, but I have a five-year-old daughter and a four-year-old son, so it's crazy. It's hectic.
Great job. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have Robert Mancuso from Asnanta College.
Yes. Good evening, members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Robert Mancuso, and I'm here to ask for support for funding for our community colleges. I was laid off in October of 2018 and have been job searching ever since. We need programs like advanced manufacturing, welding, and mechatronic programs at the community colleges to help displaced workers like me pivot into new careers. There are many people who have been laid off or displaced due to the pandemic, and some of us are a little older these days than some of the kids on this call here. And we've been kind of pushed out of the labor market and need to pivot from our previous careers into something new. And community colleges offer us the best opportunity to do that, that we can afford. You know, we've been laid off, we have mortgages or rents, and kids going to school themselves, and we really can't afford to spend the time or the effort to come up with, you know, thirty thousand dollars a year and go full-time and take care of a house and the kids and the animals and so far and so forth. Without the community colleges, I would have no path forward. I've been on a job search for two and a half years, just throwing out resumes and making blind calls and job searching on the Ethernet and hoping someone calls me back. With the community colleges and these degree programs, I have hope, I have encouragement, I have a support system now. And without funding for these programs, I'd just be sitting at home, throwing my resume into the Internet ether and hoping someone offers me at least an interview. You know, not even a job per se. I've had many opportunities since I've been laid off. I've had maybe a dozen interviews, and I've gotten nowhere. So, I ask you to fully fund the community colleges because it's the best opportunity for displaced workers to pivot in their careers and, you know, continue to contribute to the Connecticut economy. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you for sharing your story. I hope more people on YouTube and on CTN get a little inspiration from your story because we have a lot of people who are searching for their next path, and you give them hope. So, thank you so much, and thank you for your testimony. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay. So, that is the end of panel five. Now, we'll go to panel six. And panel six is from Yukon. Lauren, they're all up? Okay. Lauren Ashong.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Ashong, and I am a senior at Yukon Stanford, majoring in human development and family sciences with a concentration in early childhood development. My family originates from Accra, Ghana, but I grew up in Bridgeport, Connecticut, in a single-parent household. My mother worked more than one job to make ends meet for my brother and me. She engraved in me the true meaning of hard work and perseverance. Living in Bridgeport has its highs and lows. One day, it's a beautiful day, and the next day, it's clouded with social vices. As a young Black woman with many aspirations to bring change to my family's economic situation and environment, it has always been my desire to get a good education, be successful, and push the boundaries of the Black narrative. I thought a lot about which university I should attend. I realized Yukon had a great offering, including being accepted into the Student Support Services Program, which was a blessing in disguise. The SSS program serves students that are first-generation, low-income, and underrepresented in higher education. As a low-income student, I was supported in my transition from high school to college by participating in the SSS Pre-Colllegiate Summer Program before my first year, which was a condition of my acceptance to Yukon. During my time at Yukon, SSS supported my academic, professional, and personal goals. Because of this program, I was able to be victorious in my education. I am grateful to have been able to complete my full degree at Yukon Stanford campus. The Stanford campus has provided me with the full college experience. One thing I personally find profound is Yukon Stanford's quality of student social life. Through my enrollment, I was fortunate to have joined the African Students Association, which was a positive peer group for me. I now serve as the president of ASA and continue to strive to make a difference for others in my shoes. I viewed that education was going to be a struggle because of my financial instability. However, despite the challenges thrown. However, despite the challenges thrown my way, I am victorious and accomplished because of the SSS program. The SSS program provided me with tools, opportunities and resources to achieve my degree. Through the SSS program, I was given the chance to start my freshman year with six credits, offered exclusive opportunities for scholarships and provided personal and professional development while being counseled by my SSS advisor. Coming from Bridgeport, I know a lot of people who have, who could have benefited from the SSS program at UConn Stanford. I was one of the 40 students selected for the SSS program my first year. But there are so many more students who could use the program's support and services. Programs like SSS need funds to support additional students at UConn Stanford. It is my wish and prayer that the SSS program of UConn gets its maximum encouragement and support by the state to make a way for people in similar situations as mine to be uplifted and to believe they can also bring change no matter their background or economic class. After graduating, I hope to work for the Department of Children and Families to help less fortunate children. All of this is possible because of my education at UConn and the support of the SSS program. In closing, I would like to thank you for allowing me to share my story today. I hope that the support continues to grow for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your testimony. Childcare, that's good. Social work's good too. Have a good evening and thank you and good luck this, the rest of the semester. Have a good day. Uh, next Darlene Burksom.
Yes, hello. Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all doing well and I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to share my voice and story. My name is Darlene Burksen and I'm an undergraduate student at the University of Connecticut, majoring in biological sciences with a minor in human development and family sciences. I am from South Windsor, Connecticut, and I was raised by two incredibly strong immigrant parents, Charles and Jennifer Burksen, who came to this country with one suitcase from Ghana in search of a better life for their kids. Growing up and seeing their resilience and dedication has shaped who I am today. Knowing that anything is possible regardless of the odds is the mindset I had when deciding to embark on my journey as a first-generation college student. Being a woman of color in STEM, I knew immediately upon my acceptance to UConn that I should apply to the Women in Math, Science and Engineering Learning Committee. Being involved with the LC program has resulted in nothing less than positive contributions to my transformative journey during the past three years. With the LC staff's continued and consistent support, I've always had access to resources that have allowed me to thrive in an academically rigorous environment. In addition to that, one of my most significant accomplishments at UConn thus far has been my acceptance into the third cohort of the Bold Women's Leadership Network. Bold's mission is to empower young women like myself to become leaders in our lives and careers after college. Receiving this scholarship has alleviated an enormous amount of financial pressure off of my family and allowed me to fully focus on my long-term goal of becoming a doctor. In addition to financial support, I'm advised and supported by many highly motivated and accomplished women who help make the program possible. Upon my graduation from UConn, my priority will be to give back to the community that has given so much to me. I will do this by remaining active in the programs mentioned and more, to mentor and encourage students who come from disadvantaged backgrounds and instill the principle that anything is possible with hard work. Lastly, I would like to emphasize that your past and continued funding to first-year programs like Learn Communities and enrichment programs such as Bold and many others that support students like myself and our growth help a lot because they engrain the confidence in students like myself that one day we can make a change in the world and turn our dreams into a reality. Thank you all so much for your time and your investment into students' futures.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony and good luck with the semester. Thank you. Next we have Kayan. Can I, Kayan Jai Hugan?
Yes. Hi, everyone. Thank you for giving me the space to speak today. My name is Kendai Huggan. I go by Kia for short. I am currently a first-year graduate student pursuing my Master's of Engineering in Global Entrepreneurship. I also did my undergraduate degree at UConn and I graduated in May 2020 with the degree in Computer Science and Engineering. During my undergraduate career, I was really involved on campus, specifically the engineering diversity, NARU Center and all of the programs that came out of that provided me the opportunity to do outreach, to receive mentorship, to give mentorship and really form that community that I needed to get through those four years. And my leadership was also given the chance to grow through being involved in the organizations that come out of that center, like the National Society of Black Engineers, the Society of Women Engineers, Engineering Ambassadors. And there's even more upon that that really came together to form that community and give scholarships and opportunities to me and a lot of students who I could relate to through those programs. So after I graduated in May 2020, it wasn't too long ago, I was hired by Black Girls Code, which is a national nonprofit that inspires Black Girls Get Involved in Coding, as the name applies. And upon being hired, the CEO of that company or organization, Kimberly Bryant, told me that when she had visited UConn, she was really impressed by all of the diversity initiatives and outreach initiatives that they had. And that's what made my resume stick out to her. So really fortunate that the work and things that I was involved in at UConn gave me this national platform to be a part of. And I think that it shows just how the, with investment and funding, it's sort of a gift that keeps on giving in that way. And I'm definitely grateful for that. In my undergraduate career, I also was able to be involved in the Worth Institute and the Innovation Zone at UConn, and that sparked my interest in entrepreneurship. So I never saw myself going to graduate school, especially not within engineering and definitely not in the middle of a pandemic, given all of the financial burden that that brings. But through a full fellowship, I was able to continue my schooling and start my graduate career. So in my program, I'm founding a digital accessibility company, technical startup and being walked through that process with a lot of support that comes through the program, both technical with mentorship and non-technical with more connections that I've been able to get. So I hope to expand the world of digital accessibility and grow that business within Connecticut, given the support that I'm grateful to have. And then continuing on the note of being able to give back, this summer I'll be teaching for the School of Engineering, incoming minority freshmen in computer science. And I think that makes it full circle for me that the funding that the programs that have benefited me and just the funding that I've received directly have not only benefited me, but have given me the opportunity to give back to other students. And I hope that those students that'll teach this summer that are coming into UConn for their first time will be afforded similar opportunities so that they can keep on the gift of giving, I guess, in that sense. So thank you all for your time and thank you for the support that you've given to make stories like mine possible.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Kai, for your, for your testimony. Senator Austin, would you take over for a few minutes for me, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Number 25, number 25.
And number 25, John Ling, you are up, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is John Ling. I'm currently a veteran student at UConn. I have served in the United States Marine Corps as an infantryman in 2004 to 2008. Upon completion of my service, I returned home back to Brooklyn, New York. I had felt lost and I went to, decided to use my post nine 11 GI benefits to attend college. I ended up going to a college in New York and graduating with a Bachelor of Arts in Criminal Justice. But even after graduating, I wasn't able to find myself. I spent years in and out of jobs during that time. I ended up moving to Connecticut with my fiance. Her and a couple of close friends and family had ended up pushing me to try to rediscover a purpose. They saw an opportunity to transform my military experience with defense system and my hobby of tinkering into a lifelong career in engineering. I was introduced to the Veteran Affairs and Military Program Office at UConn. The VAMP office has been, has played a key role in facilitating my transitioning back to school. As a new student, I was impressed with how their office helped me navigate the Volk Rehab Program itself as well. They not only ensured that the paperwork was processed in a timely manner, but also personally checked in and communicated with me throughout the process. The office also facilitated paperwork that was required to register for school and assisted me with additional paperwork as well. Through the VAMP office, I was able to establish timely communications with my Volk Rehab counselors. I recalled once there was a billing issue between UConn and the VA. Office was able to fix my account at U, at UConn and served as the intermediary to resolve the issue. Ensure that student veterans like myself had a smooth transition into the university coming from the military service. The VAMP office has also provided multiple spaces for student veterans to convene together, including dedicated study rooms, including a, a space known as the Oasis. The location of that space is in the Student Union and symbolize how much the VAMP office and UConn value their student veterans. Entering as an undergraduate, majoring in engineering, I initially struggled to learn the material. It wasn't until I was in the Oasis where I met other veterans like myself who weren't the same major as I was. They would tutor me and assist me, which helped me succeed in my classes. The Oasis also represents a space for me to relieve my stress. The stress, this space was provided so that we can engage with all the veterans. We were able to talk to each other in an environment that was, that didn't have any judgment. I, myself, being an older student, have struggled to relate to many of my traditional classmates due to my age and experience. Without the support from VAMP and spaces they provide, I would not have been successful in my studies. Having worked with veterans and military programs at other colleges and universities, I can say with confidence that the tremendous support that I received from the VAMP office at UConn is unsurpassed. The support of veterans like me is unique to UConn. So I'm here to say, to share my story because I want to let you know that it is imperative that UConn continues to offer these services. These services are the reason why I've had another opportunity in life to learn and to be part of the community. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ling. I also was a military vet and used my military vet dollars to go to three, what is now Three Rivers, was then Heaton Community College, which just says how old I am, but congratulations on that. Very, very good story. Up next is Antoine O'Connor.
Yes. Hi, members of the Appropriation Committee. My name is Antoine Connor. I am a graduating senior at Southern Connecticut State University, majoring in Communication Disorders. For years, I've been fighting and losing against the same system that placed me in front of you all today. A system that I dreamed would take me out of the ghetto and change the cycle of failure that I was born into. This country prides itself for championing the notions of equal rights, equal opportunities and freedom. Yet this nation functions on an infraction that makes it difficult for people of color to obtain a college degree. It perpetuates a dynamic in which my white counterparts find it surprising that it takes longer than four years to finish a degree, while my black peers find my accomplishments admirable. Where four-year education is considered second nature for a white student, my fellow black peers are told that just graduating high school is enough. While I have been able to overcome this systemic mold, others like me have not always been as fortunate. I have done so much to get to where I am and I refuse to give up my seat. A seat which was never created for me, but one I forged out of my blood, sweat and tears. Working the night shift to make ends meet while also sleeping on the floor of my grandmother's studio apartment, I realized what my purpose was. Not to be the first person in my family to graduate college, but to become the voice of people like me, using my struggles demanding for change on behalf of those who found themselves voiceless. At Southern, I not only have the opportunity to receive a college education, I am also embraced by an institution that allows me to voice my concerns and speak out on this very issue. The lack of resources to help those who are less fortunate achieve higher education is a main reason why students of color graduate at a much lower rate than those of their white classmates. After already surviving through an under-resourced high school, a financial aid packet from FAFSA is not enough. Students residing in low-income neighborhoods lack access to educational resources that will help them educate themselves on better ways to support and fund their college careers. While I am living proof that one can defy the odds and win this battle, with your help, we could win this battle. You can do something about the lack of resources that are offered to students who fall in a much lower tax bracket. Your decisions and actions can level the financial playing fields. Please understand that you can change the lives of many students like myself in allocating more funding to higher education students is a great first step in the right direction. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much, Antoine. Good story. Um, up next is Matthew Driscoll.
Good evening. Respected senators, representatives and members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Matt Driscoll and I am a pre-law student majoring in Business and Political Science at Eastern Connecticut State University. I am here today to ask you to support funding for our state universities. As someone who considers himself an average consumer of political news, I understand the predicament that the legislature is in this upcoming season. Funding for college may seem like an unnecessary expense or frivolous spending, especially in a pandemic, but I can assure you that this is not the case in Connecticut. The investments the state has made in our universities are paying dividends for all parties involved and will continue to do so into the future. This past year has been a particularly unique experience, especially as a junior in college. I have been fortunate enough to attend Eastern, which through the state's commitment, offers a high-quality education at a low cost. And it's not just my opinion. Eastern was yet again named the top regional public university in New England by the US News and World Report, despite the challenges brought on by the pandemic. This award was recognized due to the efforts made by our faculty and students and the potential growth we have in store. Through keeping in touch with friends at different universities across the country during this time, I noticed that Eastern was unique in their relations with us, the students. While other schools were quiet or silent on what was going on, Eastern was very active in communicating details about events, returns and other important notices that affected our lives. And it wasn't just the updates and the conferences, they listened to us as well. Through our advocacy and the help of administration, the university senate passed numerous provisions that gave many students the relief and confidence that they needed to get through two tough semesters. Eastern has been there throughout the pandemic for me and my fellow students and I am very proud of my university. Many students come to our schools motivated to improve their lives, thus helping the state in the process. I hope that they will have the same opportunities that I have been blessed to have over these past three years. I have been fortunate to have my health and the opportunity to continue my education. Many have not been so lucky. As we speak, families in your districts and across the state are making difficult choices about the affordability and feasibility of college this year and in the future. I ask the committee to consider these factors when determining our funding for next year. While the past year has been difficult, there is a sense of hope for me personally and in our campus community. Many students are looking forward to new experiences, in-person events and graduations in the future. The positive results of our efforts and good news with vaccines is a reminder that returning to normalcy is coming very soon. However, we recognize that it is a team effort and we need everyone's support. As members of the Appropriations Committee, you are a part of that team as well. I am grateful that the state has honored its commitment to economic improvement through offering high-quality and affordable education. And I hope that the future generations of students will continue to get the same opportunities that I have had. I thank you for your invitation to speak today and yield the rest of my time to the panel. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Matthew. Um, up next is Tia Mears.
Hello. Members of the Appropriation Committee, my name is Tia Mears. I am a sociology student at Central Connecticut State University and I am here to ask your support in funding our school. A little bit about me, I was adopted from China by a single mother and I grew up in Tallon, Connecticut my entire life. Along with being a sociology student, I am a community engagement minor. I am graduating a semester early and I plan to join the Peace Corps. I'd like to tell you a little bit about our experience at Central this past year. Last month, uh, last March, CCSU had one of the earliest COVID responses and this is different from any other school. We were in the middle of our mourning when we were told to evacuate. And the school was closed immediately. But in this time, um, we had, we had other challenges. We were getting our belongings back from storage units as well as everyone else adapting to work from home and school life from home and just loneliness. and just loneliness and uncertainty overall. But what Central did is we continued to support our students. CCSU's Central Activity Network conducted the first virtual concert across the nation for all the colleges. And as vice president of that club, I can speak on behalf that that was just the beginning. We continued to host unique events like virtual talent shows to keep spirits high. We extended our event programming into the summer, which was not typical for us, but we saw the need to continue to connect students to one another. We had drive-in movie nights, celebrity guest speakers, a fireworks show, and all this time we used to see what virtual program even was, and we continued to modify this. So when Fall 2020 came, we were ready for on-campus events to go forward with social distancing and safety protocols. As of today, we've fallen into a more comfortable routine, and we still have challenges like Zoom fatigue, and we would love your support. We would like funding to help continue to connect with one another through social and educational programs on campus. These, these interactions are so important for us as our emotional well-being and to perform well in school. And Central is a community-engaged environment, and we want to be together. Some of the opportunities would be being a part of New Britain and doing service projects in Hartford. I can share my experience, and I've started my internship last semester at a homeless shelter in New Britain, and I saw firsthand how urgent the need was for service and support. And I have also been on the executive board for Habitat for Humanity. I was lucky enough to be able to be on their builds a few years ago, but we have not been able to do that since, and they're also struggling to meet their goal. But through all of this, we have been understanding and we, we need help from you to make our experience at CCSU what it used to be or even better. So that is why I encourage you all to prioritize funding for our university so that students will always have the opportunity to connect with one another. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Tia. Is Emma on?
She is not, ma'am chair. The next panel is coming on right now.
Thank you.
She is in the waiting room.
Oh, Emma's in the waiting room?
I just. Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Emma. Go ahead.
Hi, okay. So I'll just get right into introducing myself. Sorry, I'm in a room with weird Wi-Fi. So my name is Emma Hennig. I'm a senior music education major at WestCon, and I'm just going to talk a little bit about how they responded to COVID. When it comes to how WestCon responded to COVID-19, I, they've done a phenomenal job. I haven't been let down in any way, shape, or form. I feel safe in every aspect, and I can say with confidence that their students' health is their top priority. So in the beginning of my college experience, I chose WestCon because of how kind and helpful the faculty was within my audition process and just the regular not pandemic process of the college decision. And now, when we're in such trying times, I have not been let down by them at all. They told me that they would be there for me and the student body whenever we needed them, and they went through with that promise. So in my music classes, specifically for COVID, we wear special masks to prevent airflow. We have limited rehearsals based on what data says is the safest amount of time people can sing in a room, and our professors have made incredible accommodations to the lesson in regard to Zoom and stuff. So they give these in-depth, engaging, online lessons, which is really difficult to do in a music classroom. And I honestly feel like I'm getting just as much of an education from my faculty online as I would be in person. Obviously, it's difficult, but they are giving their all to the student body. And honestly, all the other aspects of WestCon have been incredible too. So the cafeteria every day closes for two hours for sanitize, to sanitize everything. Bathrooms are exceptionally clean, and all the facilities are monitored by faculty who are there to ensure the health and safety of the students. So they make sure cafeteria tables are always wiped down in between every use. Like I said, bathrooms are always clean. The rooms get aerated every thirty minutes in between use to make sure it's clean. And I'm just so blown away by how well the professors, administrators, everyone has just responded to COVID. And like I said, I chose the school because I wanted to be prioritized as a student, and I wanted to feel like they saw me as a person, not just as a consumer. And in this time where the students need that help, WestCon has not let anyone down, and they have absolutely gone through with all of their promises.
Thank you very much, Emma. Thank you for coming on. We're glad you made it. Thank you so much.
No problem. Is there anything else that you needed from me?
No, I think that that's good. I think that that's really good. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Can I begin?
Everybody in? Up next is Nikali.
My name is Nikolai Bulks. I'm a junior studying biophysics and structural biology at the University of Connecticut. Before sharing, I would like to thank the committee members for holding the hearing and also for giving me this grand opportunity to share my perspective and my story, and why funding for program support in first-generation college students are critical. I migrated to the United States from Jamaica during the summer of 2017, and as a rising senior at Brooklyn High School in Hartford, I had to learn to adapt to a first-world country and pick up the pace of the American society. This was a really tense time for me. College applications were due soon. I knew I wanted to attend college, but did not know how to go about it, especially in a new environment. Soon I met a friend who was also from Jamaica and was a part of the program in her high school, UConn College Access Preparation Program, UCAP. This program was a blessing for me. As a first-generation college student, I did not have anyone at home who could prepare me for college, and the UCAP program was instrumental in helping me. The program leader Christina helped me every step of the way with my college application and financial aid. UCAP program supported me as I applied to several colleges to study biology so I could start to pursue my dream of becoming a cardiothoracic surgeon. Amongst many acceptances, I decided to attend the University of Connecticut because of their reputable undergraduate and medical program at an affordable cost. As I started my journey at UConn, I came across many life-changing opportunities such as the McNair Scholars Program and the Lewis Stokes Alliance Minority Participation Program. Alongside my peers in these programs who are first-generation college students from high-need households and self-identity and self-identify as underrepresented racial or ethnic groups, I have been exposed to opportunities, including extensive research exposure, preparation for medical school, and mentorship from professionals in a variety of STEM backgrounds. These programs create innovative investigators across STEM fields while also providing professional development. These programs provide a well-rounded opportunity to get hands-on research experience, exposure to the fields of our dreams, and advancement of our social capital. Because of the support from McNair and LSAM, I will fulfill, I will fulfill my dream of becoming a surgeon. Investing in UCAP, LSAM, McNair, and other programs that support underrepresented students is essential for a better Connecticut. It gives Connecticut the ability to enhance its economic growth and prosperity through the hands of research. This will attract some of the brightest and best minds to the state. I see myself being an innovative scientist that would be thriving to help create a healthier 2030, and the vision is supported and motivated by the programs at UConn that ignites the desire for underrepresented students like me to do better. As Benjamin Franklin said, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next is Steven Santos.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Steven Santos. I'm a senior computer science major at the University of Connecticut, and I'm from Weathersfield, Connecticut. Before I begin, I want to thank the committee for holding this hearing and for the opportunity to speak today. I also want to thank the General Assembly for their past support of UConn and its programs. When I was a senior at Weathersfield High School, I remember applying for colleges, hoping to stay in state so that I could be close to home and have an affordable education. As the first person in my family to be college-bound, my parents were not able to provide any guidance on college, and so I was intimidated. I felt so fortunate to be accepted not only to UConn, but also the Lewis Stokes Alliance for Minority Participation, or LSAM, which has helped me ease the transition from high school to college. LSAM supports underrepresented students in STEM and has been an important part of my UConn education. In my first semester, LSAM afforded me the opportunity to enroll in a class which taught me all about STEM, including UConn's resources in the field, career pathways, and research opportunities. Through LSAM, I also established a community and support system by making friends who have become an important part of my life. The LSAM program made the big intimidating campus feel much smaller and more accessible for a first-generation student like me. In my sophomore year, the LSAM coordinator introduced me to another instrumental program in my journey, which is the McNair Scholars Program. The McNair Program prepares first-generation, low-income, and underrepresented students for PhD studies in STEM fields by providing mentorship, research opportunities, GRE preparation courses, seminars, and support in applying for graduate studies and postgraduate careers. I was intrigued by research, so I decided to apply to the McNair Fellows Program, which was a one-semester introductory research experience where I shattered a lab, and then the McNair Scholars Program, through which I have been able to conduct my own research in the computer science and engineering department. In order to, in addition to researching and gaining skills to prepare me for my future, I've also gotten to mentor students in the UConn College and Access Preparations Program, who are from under-resourced high schools. By teaching them laboratory skills in physics and computer science, I had the opportunity to pay it forward and give the students something that I wish I had when I was younger. In addition to working with these young students, I have also had the opportunity to have a seat, a seat at the table with other scholars by presenting my research project findings to the university and engaging with STEM faculty. With the help of LSAM and McNair, I've, I've learned a lot about myself and who I want to be. Now, in my senior year, I will be entering, entering the field of software engineering. And today, I feel accomplished as a student and researcher and prepared for my career. All of this is possible because of the quality of education and support I receive from UConn. Again, I want to thank you for your past support of UConn and its programs, and I hope you will provide additional funding to more students like me. Thank you for listening to my story.
Thank you very much, Steven. Up next is Noah Sobel Pressman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. My name is Noah Sobel Pressman, and I'm a senior from West Hartford. I'm majoring in management and minoring in data analytics and Mandarin. My dad is a professor at UConn, so I had a feeling I would always end up here. When I learned about the management program's entrepreneurship track, it really solidified my interest in attending UConn. While at UConn, I've been very involved in the entrepreneurship community. And this community, which has been fostered by the Worth Institute, has been the highlight of my college career. One of the reasons why it is so special is because of the diversity of backgrounds students come from. Students come from all different entrepreneurship experience, hometowns, majors, races, and socioeconomic backgrounds. This diverse student participation makes for heightened learning experiences. The Worth Institute has also been able to provide student scholarships from a range of economic backgrounds. These scholarships allow many students to explore entrepreneurship without limitations that would exist without this financial support. I'm very fortunate to have been able to receive some of these scholarships, and this has allowed me to participate in these programs without the, without the additional financial burden. Additionally, the Worth Institute supports students in creating new programs for their fellow students. With support from the Worth Institute, I was able to launch our Student Venture Fund. The Student Fund members meet as a class and allow, and it allows them to invest real money in real startups. This class of seventeen students each participate in a life-transforming opportunity. This would have never been possible without the Worth Institute. To conclude, I think it is important that we continue to support entrepreneurship at UConn. Small businesses are creating about two-thirds of new U.S. jobs, and with everything going on right now due to the COVID-19 pandemic, that number will surely increase. At UConn, we have the opportunity to train the next generation of entrepreneurs and support them in starting their businesses in Connecticut. Continuing to fund entrepreneurship at UConn will ensure that dream becomes a reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Noah. Up next is, and I'm, no, I'm not going to say your name correctly. I apologize in advance. Chinadu or Chinadu? How is it?
Chinadu.
I was getting pretty close. I've been, I've been looking at your name for the last half hour and trying to figure out how I was going to say it. Thank you very much for coming today.
Yeah, don't worry about it. It happens quite a bit. I'll get started. Members of the Appropriations Committee, my name is Chinadu Unkwa. I'm a senior, a resident from Bridgeport, and a psychological sciences major in the School of Liberal Arts and Sciences. I wanted to thank the members of the General Assembly for their support in hearing out the voices of students both past and present. I applied to a number of schools post-high school graduation with a number of different offers, but what drew me to UConn was the prestige and a variety of campuses that they owned, which coupled with their labs, medical facilities, and famous faculty, I felt as though I would be getting a quality education with the best resources. And I found that I wasn't mistaken. Having enrolled in UConn, I found myself at the Stanford campus, a much smaller campus than the one I was, that I had heard of, but I quickly found that this smaller campus was much more to my liking with class sizes that led to more meaningful interaction and engagement between myself, the faculty, and the students around me. These interactions with students have allowed me to enroll in a number of different activities, particularly extracurriculars that have given me valuable leadership experience, as well as the chance to rub shoulders with like-minded individuals who seek to do the most with their lives after graduation by affecting those around them and their respective communities. I've also had the chance to work with faculty on projects and events that I've found central to what I choose to do with my life, particularly my advisor, someone who I've found has helped me broaden my interest in the topics of neuropsychology through her courses that I've taken with her, as well as the whole of the Department of Psychology at UConn Stanford with her engaging classes and research topics, as well as the meaningful connections that I've made with the whole of them as a student of psychology. Seeing how their work contributes to educating the minds of others like myself, I seek to become a psychologist to hopefully make a meaningful contribution to my community by conducting research that advances the current knowledge of what we know, but to also use it as a stepping stone towards affecting the world as a whole in the area of psychology. The experiences in volunteer work and collaboration that I found in my extracurriculars that I participated in have only further bolstered my desire to give back to those in need of it, having encountered those in need of mental and physical aid, raising awareness for those issues and working with different departments and clubs such as the Mental Health Resource Center, service groups, and student government to provide further awareness and necessary programming to address all the needs for those that need them, as I hope to do for the state of Connecticut when I become a psychologist. I hope my testimony from my experience at the Stanford campus and my undergraduate career has proved to be supplemental and the efforts of the students at every campus to illustrate the need for more investment in the UConn budget. I thank you for your time and for your attention.
We thank you for your time. Thanks so much for coming today. Appreciate it. Representative Walker, are you taking over?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. Thank you for, for taking over, and thank you, Chinadu, for, for your testimony. Next, we have Jao Benetis.
Yeah, that's me. Hi. Greetings from any members. My name is Joao Benitez, and I thank you for allowing me this time to talk to you about my experience at UConn as a student and discuss how the University of Connecticut brings returns on its investments by educating and preparing Connecticut's youth for successful careers within the state. As a regional student representing the Stanford campus, I hope to offer perspective that demonstrates how UConn's influence stretches across the state. I'm a senior at the Business School in Stanford, pursuing a major in business data analytics. I live in Greenwich, and I chose to attend UConn Stanford for its strong programs in business and the flexibility that it offers. It's a largely commuter school. As a student preparing for a career in the financial sector, UConn has set me up for professional success in a number of ways. First, UConn has excellent programs for students seeking academic depth combined with hands-on industry experience. For example, I'm a member of the Fast Track Four Plus One program, which allows me to take three graduate courses as an undergrad and then completing my master's within one year. In these courses, I obtain a deeper understanding of what the industry is by teaming up against real-life projects with others who are already within the industry. The graduate courses at UConn have offered me and given me a greater edge and a head start than I would have ever imagined. So in addition to being academically prepared, I have obtained the resources that I need to put in good use with the UConn Career Center here in Stanford. Career Day, for example, connects students with employers at this event, which allows me to expand my network and pitch myself consistently and effectively with recruiters. And the Career Center also helps me write my resumes, cover letters, and preparations for interviews, all which are needed when I apply for jobs in the future. Furthermore, UConn offers great support for students who aspire to become innovators, entrepreneurs, and business leaders, especially those who want to stay up and set up firms here in Connecticut. For example, UConn has generously awarded me for the EXID Scholarship, which was awarded for me for my academic success and my desire to start a data analytics firm in Derry. In addition, helping me defile my tuition, I was, I was invited to a conference at which I networked with alumni in hiring decisions at companies. and learned specific information about my, about how to succeed in the financial sector and how to start my own business. One of the great things about UConn Stanford, especially, especially its tremendous opportunity for students to intern and network with companies and corporations in the greater New York City area. The UConn Stanford Career Center is working nonstop to secure these positions for students, including the countless career opportunities that are already right in Connecticut. For example, UConn's recent partnership with Synchrony Financial, a company located in Stanford, Connecticut. I have a number of friends who have been working at Synchrony as undergrads and now have the jobs lined up straight out of college, right here in Stanford. This is just one of the many ways UConn Stanford feeds directly into the Connecticut job market. Further, even students that find work in New York are likely to reside here in Connecticut to make that long run. And many like myself have dreams of starting my own business, uh, and firms. My ultimate goal would be to start my data analytics company here in Stanford, the place that has given me so much opportunity, and I would hope to provide the further generation of UConn students, uh, the same mentorship, networking, and internship opportunities that I have been provided in the past four years. I hope my story makes the clear crucial role of how UConn plays in preparing Connecticut's youth uh, for secure and successful futures right here at home in the state. Regional campuses, like Stanford, offer unique opportunities due to the geographic location, and UConn plays a big role in securing academic and professional opportunities for all the Connecticut, for all the Connecticut youth in all the corners of the state. Many of us, like myself, wish our success and to give back to Connecticut. However, this is all contingent on whether UConn can afford it, whether UConn can afford our future, whether UConn can afford Connecticut's future. Therefore, I implore that you continue investing in UConn and in Connecticut's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that testimony and congratulations and good luck for the semester. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now we go on to panel eight, or nine, nine. Panel nine? Are we?
They are all here.
Okay, great. Awesome. Uh, next we have, uh, and these are the community colleges now. Uh, next we have Izzy Jacobs.
Hello, members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Isabella Jacobs. I'm a liberal arts and sciences student at Northwestern Connecticut Community College, and I'm here to respectfully request that you support funding for our community colleges. I'm in my first year at C C C in Winston, Connecticut, and it has honestly been one of the most exciting and successful years of school that I've ever experienced. I've had so many amazing opportunities that I never would have imagined for my first year of college. Being a part of Team Success Scholars or T S S at Northwestern has allowed me the opportunity to be an intern at the American Mural Project, an amazing nonprofit in Winston, Connecticut. Through this internship, I have assisted teaching artists in delivering virtual art programs to community youth and have aided in marketing outreach. Through T S S, I am working with a criminal justice professor on a community action project, researching and developing a reentry simulation program for formerly incarcerated citizens. Without Northwestern, I don't believe that I ever would have gotten an experience like this in my first year, let alone my first semester in college. Along with my internship, I have and will be participating in several conferences, including the Oxford Consortium of Human Rights Conference and the Northwest Chamber of Commerce's WOW Women's Forum. From learning about empowerment of women in the workplace to addressing human rights issues right here in Connecticut to across the world, these conferences are more opportunities I never would have dreamed of without N C C C. Northwestern has helped me understand that learning happens not only in the classroom, but also in my community and that I, I have a voice to make sustainable change for a better future. In addition to the abundance of opportunities made pop, made available to students, another one of the main reasons I had chosen to attend Northwestern was the possibility that I could get packed funding and attend my first couple of years of college for free. I have received this funding for both semesters, and it has really given me a sense of security for my future. I plan on transferring to earn my bachelor's degree and may either choose to get an MBA or go to law school. Knowing that I am able to complete two years of college for free gives me incredible peace of mind now and positions me for financial stability to handle my future college costs. Now, we all know that college and education in general looks very different this year due to the pandemic. I'm not going to lie, knowing that my first year of college was going to be virtual made me nervous since I am normally, as I normally learn easier through in-person visual teaching. My professors, however, make themselves available and accessible for any questions or clarification through Blackboard, Webex, and Microsoft Teams. With this kind of access, as well as the opportunity to take advantage of virtual tutoring, tutoring from Northwestern's tutors, I have been set up for successes, for success in my classes, and I'm currently thriving. Today, as a current Northwestern student, packed recipient, Team Success, Team Success Scholar, and official campus ambassador, I try to advocate for this school whenever and to whomever I can. From the sheer amount of opportunities offered at this college, the incredible support of faculty, staff, and fellow students, to the flexibility shown in response to this pandemic, Northwestern Connecticut, Connecticut Community College has given me the best first year of college imaginable. This is why I encourage all of you to prioritize funding for our colleges and universities so that other students, such as my younger brother, will have access to the same opportunities I had. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony and good luck this year. Thank you. Next we have Erin Rogelin.
Erin?
Hi, good evening, members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Erin Rogelin, and I am the president of the Senior Nursing Class at Nagatuck Valley Community College. Today I want to discuss my experience in the nursing program during this pandemic. When I was in my second semester of the nursing program last March, when this pandemic started to hit our area, my classmates and I were pulled from our clinical assignments at a hospital sites and immediately transitioned to full virtual learning. Luckily for us, our instructors did not miss a beat. During the time that we would have been learning on a hospital floor, we began working on clinical case studies, online simulations of patient situations, and online medication administration situations. In the following semesters, we were able to get back into our clinical sites part-time, and we continued to use these supplemental exercises to ensure we were receiving a well-rounded clinical education to best prepare us for our future career in nursing. Without all of these resources, there is no way I would be ready to go out and join the front lines to fight against COVID nineteen and all the new variants of this disease after graduating this May. But it is not just this nursing program that has readied me for this fight. It was the English and communication classes I took that helped me develop the competencies to communicate with professional and medical terminology with my colleagues and in layman's terms with my patients. It was the math classes I took that gave me the skills to make accurate medication dosage calculations. It was the many science classes I took that gave me an in-depth understanding of the anatomy and physiology of my patients, as well as an understanding of how each type of medication actually interacts with each body system. It is because of the education provided to me from my school and because of these extra resources provided to me during this pandemic that I can confidently say I am ready to join the fight on the front lines here on the Connecticut workforce. Members of the Appropriations Committee, I want to sincerely thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. It is because of your past support and funding of education in Connecticut that I had this opportunity. And it is because of your past support and funding of education in Connecticut that I have the opportunity to receive my nursing education at Nagatuck Valley Community College and that I will be graduating debt-free with every door open to me to continue pursuing my education here. It is because of your past support and funding of education in Connecticut that I will become a successful worker and a sustainable career with the ability to pay taxes, buy a house, and stay in the state that I love. Please continue to give others the opportunities you have provided to me. They want to stay here, get their education here, join the workforce here, become taxpayers and homeowners here. But they can only do that if the access and affordability continues. So, members of the Appropriations Committee, as the voice of not only my fellow nursing students, but of all of my fellow students in all of the degree programs, I ask you to please continue funding our futures here in Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, and thank you for your testimony. You did a great job. Thank you. Have a good evening. Uh, Tahera Gordon? Tahera Gordon, she's number thirty-eight?
I'm sorry, I didn't unmute myself.
I'm sorry, thirty-seven. That's okay. Go right ahead.
Good evening, senators, representatives, and members of the Appropriations Committee. I thank you for the opportunity to speak about this important topic of keeping the state of Connecticut college expenses affordable. My name is Tahera Gordon, and I am a massage therapist student at Asnuntuck Community College. I am a forty-five-year-old, single mother of a twenty-four-year-old son and a ten-year-old daughter. I recently had to retire from my job of twenty years working with the developmentally disabled because of a work-related injury. My plan, once my son finished college and I finished paying his tuition, I would return to school and participate in my employer's tuition reimbursement program. Well, lo and behold, I was injured on the job, and unfortunately, I had to retire. So that put a wrench in my plans. During the time of waiting to see if I could return to work after having neck surgery, I started taking classes at Asnuntuck to prepare for a possible career change because their tuition was most affordable. At this time, I can only afford to pay for one class at a time, which does not qualify me for scholarships because I should be taking at least six credits. This has become very disheartening, but doable. It just may take a little longer to finish. However, the thought that the tuition for Connecticut State Colleges may change is very scary for me. This decision I might have to make is the choice whether to sit on my behind and do nothing for the rest of my life or eat peanut butter and jelly in order to pay for college. Now, I don't like peanut butter and jelly, but that's just a description of what I might have to eat. Not only that I, that, I still must save and prepare for my ten-year-old's college tuition. Mentally, this is hard for me and others like me that have worked for years and then have their jobs taken away. With the mental health crisis becoming its own epidemic, we must stop and ask the question, do we want to put any more stress on Americans and the people of Connecticut? We know that a college education is a necessity to get a decent job, and in this day and time, you practically need a PhD in order to do so. Just take a minute and think of all the Connecticut parents who during this COVID pandemic have lost their jobs, homes, retirement plans, savings for their children's tuition, all due to the rise in layoffs and businesses closing. Think of the helplessness they must feel to say to their children that you cannot go to college because they cannot afford it and in turn crushing that child's dreams. Think of the adults like myself that must get an education after all these years because they lost their jobs and now cannot find another job because of education requirements. On top of it all, they still have families to support. Can you imagine the mentality of that parent, the feeling that there is no hope and how that affects their mental health? Financial aid does not cover all tuition costs all the time, and for some, a hundred dollars more a month may be too much. Speaking on behalf of other students that I've had conversations with, there are several students that are in the same boat as me. Non-traditional students, been laid off, had to take care of parents, and so on. These students have expressed possibly not returning to Asnuntuck due to affordability. One disturbing thing that I heard the most was their mental state. As the president of the Spiritual Mind and Body Club at Asnuntuck, I have students that have reached out for regular meditation and yoga practice due to having to choose their education or their living situation and needing an outlet. Their ages range from young adults, middle-aged adults, and older adults. And the amount of resource information that I have given to help with mental health is astounding. Their concern isn't about not getting an A in a class or having a large workload. Their concern is if they cannot afford to pay for college, what kind of life will they have if they do not have the proper education? This all comes back to you and why Connecticut State College students and me need this committee to keep the state of college tuition affordable. Keeping college tuition affordable in the state of Connecticut will create opportunities for those who have lost jobs over the past year and need to change their career path. Keeping tuition low may help with the lack of enrollment crisis. Most importantly, taking college courses at an affordable rate may help with the mental health crisis because face it, Americans have had a lot to go through financially over the past year, and it is still not over. With a sense of importance, I am urging you to keep college tuition in the state of Connecticut affordable. I need it, parents need it, students need it, correct, Connecticut residents need it. Thank you for your time and listening to me about this very important subject.
Thank you so much for your advocacy. I mean, that's what you, your statements were about, advocating for us continue investing in higher education because it does help all of us. So thank you very much and good luck with your, your, your kids are, are going to college?
I have one son that's finished, and my daughter is ten. There's a fourteen-year gap.
Thank you, and thank you for your, for your talk tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Next we have Kayla Garner. Kayla?
Good evening, uh, members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Kayla Garner, and I am representing Gateway Community College to encourage sustainable funding for our students. Thank you for allowing me to tell my story tonight. I came to Connecticut three years ago from Georgia. I went to college there, but dropped out for personal reasons, including a difficult childhood and abusive home situation. When I became homeless at twenty-one, it became my defining moment. Um, I moved to Guilford to live with my stepfather and my six younger half siblings. I was working at Dunkin' Donuts, but knew I wanted more. One particularly stressful day, I went home from work and I went online. Looking at the homepage for Gateway, I knew that's where I wanted to be. Throughout my journey at Gateway, I've received a great deal of help and encouragement from faculty and staff. I am in my final full-time semester, majoring in Engineering Science. Prior to being the current acting president of the Student Government Association, I have also established the Engineering Society and the Mental Health Advocacy Club, M H A C, on campus. Working alongside the Student Activities Director, S G A, has been able to focus on developing student programming to keep us connected. Activities range from fun trivia nights to student leadership development opportunities, such as sending students to virtual conferences. The Family Economic Security Program, F A S P, has been my largest advocate for staying in school. This program looks at the whole student and identifies our needs without judgment. My counselors have assisted me in learning financial independence, career focus, and how to advocate for myself in my academics when struggles inevitably arise. In addition to F A S P, my academic scholarships from the foundation and my work-study job in the Engineering Department and in the Wellness Center got me to this point in my education. When the hand, when the pandemic hit last March, I found myself, like so many other students, struggling with the new normal. All my siblings and I were studying from home and having difficulties with internet connectivity. This made it challenging for me to complete my classes successfully. Well, then, my laptop crashed, so I applied and was awarded a laptop scholarship from Gateway's Foundation. Having my own laptop enabled me to continue working towards my goal, which included graduating and political activism. As the president of the S G A, I have been able to learn the importance of monetary appropriations in our school system. It is my hope that you continue to support community college students at a funding level that allows us all to achieve our educational hopes and dreams and to transform us from dreamers into doers. I am learning the importance of community. I have drive and ambition, but it's this Gateway Village that is fashioning me to becoming the woman I want to become. Thank you.
Thank you, and yay Gateway. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Have a good evening. Uh, next we have Mohammed Kon- Koné? Mohammed?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I don't know. Can you guys see me?
No.
I don't know how to turn on my video. All right, can you see me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, good evening, members of the, well, thank you for allowing me to testify this evening on behalf of student at Noah Community College. I am Mohammed Koné, and I am a first-generation refugee student. I am originally from South Saharan, West Africa, Liberia. Uh, my family and I migrated from a refugee camp because of civil wars and moved to several places. We started in Guinea refugee camps, the Ivory Coast Refugee Camp, and then the Ghana Refugee Camp, and then finally we came to the United States. At Noah Community College, I am taking classes part-time for an accounting certificate, and I will be finishing in May of twenty-twenty-two. I want to refresh my accounting skills so that I can continue for my master's degree in accounting and become a certified public accountant. I currently have a bachelor's degree in international business with an accounting minor from Fairfield University. While I was earning my bachelor's degree, I was also playing at a Division One soccer program, which was very which was very time consuming and did not allow me the time to do internship during my academic journey. I choose Anorah Community College for my accounting certificate because the accounting program is one of the best value. A great program, mentorship, career placement opportunity, and it is affordable. In July of two thousand and twenty, I was offered and accepted as a full-time positions with my current company. I am now work with ICAR International in the financial department. I switched from taking day classes to night classes. In additions, I am the treasurer for the accounting club on campus. I also was recently accepted into Connecticut Professional Group for Accounting. I am also very fortunate to have been invited to join the Uplift Program at NCC. This program is designed to empower informs and encouragements of color to reach their highest academic potential. As an Uplift student, I will receive ongoing service which include dedicated advisor, mentor, and varieties of workshops, I mean. I am thrilled to be part of this because I know Uplift will support me now and in my future. I really enjoy the other students in my accounting club, even though we have not met in person yet. The faculty staff have been so helpful. The school is a valuable resource for someone like me. Returning to school to help build my skills in accounting and move me up in the workforce, I ask that all of you consider funding Anorah and the rest of the community colleges in a way that support those schools and the student like me that I already in the workforce. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your testimony and good luck in school. Have a good semester. Thank you.
You too.
Next, we move into the final panel of students and it's students from from Charter Oak. Tasha Gray.
Tasha?
Tasha?
Tasha, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Good evening to the members of the Appropriations Committee. I would just like to start by taking a moment to thank you for taking the time to listen to our stories about how we got here and why being able to continue this path of higher education is so important to us. My name is Tasha Gray and I'm in the Business Administration Program at Charter Oak College. I can say that was such a sense of pride because the road it took here to get here was very difficult. To have the opportunity to speak in front of you today is a privilege. When I dropped out of high school at the age of sixteen and got pregnant shortly after, I became another unfortunate statistic. Although I had dreams of going to college someday, I knew that the odds were stacked against me. My life had gone in a direction that I hadn't intended for it to go. And before I knew it, years passed by, I had two more children and still no college degree. It was something that always bothered me because regardless of my actions, I do place a huge value on education. I was ashamed and disappointed in myself. In my late twenties, I developed a problem with drinking. By my thirties, I was a full-blown addict. I threw away everything important in my life, including my hopes and dreams of finishing college. Statistics say that people like me end up in jails, institutions or dead. We certainly don't end up as college graduates. By two thousand and sixteen, my entire life had fallen apart. I couldn't continue living the way that I was, but I didn't see any way out. I decided to make the decision to ask for help. Over time and with hard work, my life started improving. I amended broken relationships and began to become a responsible and productive member of society again. Even though I was making progress, I always felt like something was missing. I needed to finish my education, so I enrolled at Three Rivers Community College. Last December, I graduated with honors in the same week that I celebrated four years in recovery. I knew that I wanted to continue on to earn my bachelor's, but I wasn't sure if I'd be able to afford it. Because of the choices that I made, I struggled financially to take care of my responsibilities. My advisor informed me of Charter Oak's affordable tuition and told me that I'd be eligible for their community college price match scholarship. This made it possible for me to enroll and begin classes this semester. Because of all of Charter Oak's classes are online, I'm able to complete my schoolwork around my own schedule. I, like many other non-traditional students, have obligations that must be met. Charter Oak allows me to fulfill these obligations while also getting a quality education. By continuing to provide funding to the school, it allows more people who have struggled like me to obtain affordable degrees. It affords us the opportunity to change the narrative and create a positive future for ourselves and for our families. It enables us to demonstrate to our children the value of education and of hard work. It teaches us the skills that we need to have successful careers when we graduate and it gives us the chance to reach our potential and live a life that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tasha. Tasha, for 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 that. And I hope people heard your story. I really do. And thank you for sharing it. That must have been hard. But thank you and congratulations. And you're going to complete it. I know that. It'll be done and you'll be on to graduate school right away.
Thank you. You too.
Stacy Pickard.
Good evening, members of the Appropriations Committee. I think I'm last and that's been quite the honor listening to all of these remarkable stories. So thank you. Oops. Hold on. Oh, no. I, oh, no. I'll just read from the paper. Okay, so my name is Sam Picard. I am forty-eight years old and live in Middletown. I'm a lifelong resident of Connecticut. I am currently the Residential Director of Ben Haven and a psychology major at Charter Oak State College. I am here today to ask for continued support for this very special college. Ben Haven, where I work, is a place where people with autism can live and learn. I started my work at Ben Haven in nineteen ninety-six as a one-hour-per-week volunteer in a group home with adults who have severe forms of autism with other related disorders. I did not have a college degree. I loved it so much that when I was offered a part-time job a few months later, I jumped at the chance to be part of a team that was providing twenty-four-hour care and support to these amazing individuals. This work invigorated me and gave me purpose. I knew nothing about the field or the diagnosis, but I instantly fell in love with these folks and the work. After achieving a part-time job in direct care, I quickly made a reputation for myself as a hard worker and was offered a full-time job in the group home. I worked for more than a decade with the same six residents, including the Ben of Ben Haven, whose mother was our founder. I set myself apart from my colleagues by creating new opportunities for our adult learners and showing a unique kind of dedication. I worked tirelessly to provide our residents with rich experiences in the community, with their families and person-centered vacations. All the while, I was mentoring and training new staff and sharing my energy and philosophy about the work, essentially converting myself into a leader among my peers. At one point, I was singled out and asked to move on and run my own group home with four different autistic adults. This was my moment. I truly became a leader in every sense of the word. I loved the work of helping others find their path to the next level of professional development. My pride and joy became helping and watching others succeed. I started to spread my wings around the agency and lead trainings and groups and truly enjoyed learning everything I could about the field. I became a certified abuse and neglect investigator and a customized employment specialist for people with disabilities. I made it my life's work to ensure the best possible outcomes for our residents. A life that includes independence, respect and happiness. My mission is to instill this in others and ask them to pass it on. In two thousand and eighteen, I started thinking about the possibility of going back to school as my boss was nearing retirement. I felt confident that I was qualified for the job because of my twenty-three years experience, but shy about not having completed my degree. I knew that if I were to attempt trying to fill his role, I should go back and finish. I needed to find a school that would accommodate my busy work and family life. I started my courses at Charter Oak in the fall of two thousand and eighteen. On February seventh, two thousand and nineteen, my boss called and told me that he had just decided to retire after forty-seven years as the residential director and that I had been named his successor in the strategic planning sessions over the past few years under our new executive director. Nervous and excited, I took over the directorship in July of two thousand and nineteen, overseeing ten residential homes that serve forty-one residents, a hundred and fifteen direct support staff and nursing. By the by January, by the end of January of two thousand and twenty, only seven months into my new role, I was writing our continuity of operations plan preparing for a possible virus that might create a global pandemic. I took the spring semester off thinking something big was about to happen. It did. I can't tell you how challenging this time has been for our residents, staff and families. I have never seen such hardship. The past year has been the greatest challenge of my life, balancing a pandemic for a residential program and taking college courses. After my spring break, after my break in the spring, I started classes again at Charter Oak. It is because of the support and professionalism of the faculty at Charter Oak that I have been able to endure this time and balance the challenges of my work and still achieve excellent grades and am set to graduate in June. My time at Charter Oak has been rich, challenging and fulfilling. I recommend this school to everyone. I intend to apply to the organizational leadership for nonprofit master's degree program. I'm asking that the needed funds continue to be appropriated to Charter Oak State College. I ask for myself and for others. Charter Oak provides professionals like me the opportunity to literally have it all. Thank you for listening and for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Sam, and thank you for sharing your story and becoming aware of how strong you really are. In order to do that, you remind me of the other young lady that was talking when she was saying she she had to choose between staying at home or eating peanut butter and jelly sandwiches for a while. It's amazing what when you can see your education right in front of you and your opportunities, how strong you can really be in order to achieve those dreams. So congratulations.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we are now into the public sector and I hope everybody got as much as I got from from listening to all the stories, the chills, the hard work, the commitment and and believing in themselves and believing in in getting their education and staying in Connecticut. So I hope we all feel and understand that with all faith. So first, we have in the next group of Stephen Monroe. Stephen? Hi, Stephen.
Good evening, Representative Walker and members of the Appropriations Committee. I come before you today not purely as a faculty member in the Social Work Department at Southern Connecticut State University, as a graduate of that institution. And as an alum, I have a particular concern with whether our state will continue to invest in students like me so that we can become productive contributing members of the state's economy as the vast majority of us do, or whether we will abandon the historic mission of the Connecticut State University system to give middle and working-class students like me a chance of, say, becoming a college professor. The benefits of making these investments reach deeply into every facet of our communities. University graduates are twenty-four percent more likely to be employed and two-point-four percent less likely to receive workers' compensation. Lifetime taxes of university graduates are two-hundred-and-fifteen times greater than those without degrees, which make them a greater contributor to governmental services, social programs and the overall public good. Employment in the nonprofit sector is twice as likely for university graduates and volunteering is two-point-three times more likely. Crime rates are lower, philanthropic contributions are higher in communities with more college graduates. But in order to for the state to gain these benefits, investments have to be made in order to make public education affordable. When I attended Southern in nineteen eighties, we paid about five hundred dollars a semester in tuition. A student in that time period could have a summer job and save the money necessary to go to a school like Southern. I was lucky to grow up in a time period when the state invested in kids like me who wanted to improve themselves by getting an education. In nineteen eighty-nine, the year I graduated, the state contributed seventy-four percent of the cost of tuition. Today, my students spend ten times the amount, currently over fifty-nine hundred dollars a semester, and there is no way that they can cover this with summer income, which is why most of them are working not just one, but often several jobs. And this is a direct result of declining state contributions to public higher education. The state share of the cost of tuition at the CSU's in two thousand and fifteen was thirty-three percent, less than half of what it was when I went to school. If you took the tuition we paid in the nineteen eighties and just adjusted it for inflation, my students would pay slightly over twelve hundred dollars a semester, about one-fifth of what they currently pay. Even worse, if you were to take the tuition that my mother-in-law paid when she attended Southern in nineteen fifties, roughly fifty dollars a semester, and adjust that for inflation, my students would pay four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and three cents a semester, actually less than nominal dollars than what we paid in the nineteen eighties. Our students at the CSU's live here in Connecticut and they stay here in Connecticut after graduation, as you've heard, and will be the ones to continue to move our state into the future. Your decisions represent a direct investment in them and also in our own future if this great state. We ask you to join us in opening minds and opening doors. And the next generation of of our students really deserve this investment. We should invest in them the way a prior generation of state leaders invested in me. Thank you for the time to speak before you today and thank you for supporting public higher education in Connecticut. And thank you also for your service to the state.
Thank you, Stephen. It's good to see you and thank you for your advocacy. Yay, social work.
Absolutely.
Have a good. Next, we have Mary Collins.
Not present, ma'am chair.
Okay, Jeannie Phillips.
Good evening. I'm Jeannie Phillips. I'm an East Hartford resident. And if you could indulge me one minute, I got to say hi to my higher ed members and my higher ed staff here. I had noticed, I'm a UConn Health Center number one fan, and I've noticed a huge difference in the care I get there from other facilities and even when I used to take care of my late mother in Rhode Island care she got. And something happened last week that when I saw that you were having this, I said, I I need to share this with you. Last Tuesday, I was scheduled for my COVID vaccine. I received an email with questions and I filled it out and one of the questions was, are you allergic to venom? And I just kind of stopped and I said, oh, yeah, I have to have an EpiPen and Benadryl with me at all times. So I knew I had time before my appointment to reach out to my doctor, who is also scheduled. I saw her on schedule to speak and I contacted her and asked her, do I keep it because my shot was supposed to be given at Pratt and Whitney's runway? And she said, no, cancel it. And her nurse Brenda called me back and told me on Saturday she was going to be giving shots at the Health Center in Farmington at their clinic. And there were a couple of slots and she told me to ask for her. And she asked me about my reactions for the last times I've been stung and I told her and she's okay, I'm going to have you sit for half an hour. I'm going to have you sit near me. So I went in, Brenda gave me my shot. It was all good. Brought a book to read so I wouldn't think about what was going on. And at my twenty-five-minute mark, I just sat bolt upright and I said, oh, my gosh, something's wrong. Something's happening. Before I could finish talking, Brenda was at my side. There were two people at a table in front of me and I didn't really know what they were doing, but they had plastic bins. They apparently had all kinds of things, so if there was a problem. I had people, it was such a well-orchestrated group. Everybody knew what to do. Brenda had told me to bring my EpiPen and so she asked me to give it to her. She injected me with the EpiPen. And my time kind of gets a little kaflooey. I did talk to her on Monday and she said, yeah, it was only a matter of minutes and your time would have been a little kaflooey at this point. And she a little bit later asked me how my throat was doing and I said, no change. So she went over to the table and came back with another needle and injected me with Benadryl. And while this is happening, somebody to my side, I could hear them calling for the ambulance. And then they called the ER and said, somebody was coming up. Brenda stayed with me until I was in the ambulance. She was right at my side the whole time. She didn't leave me. So I stayed perfectly calm the whole time. And I remember just before they put me in the ambulance, they took And I remember just before they put me in the ambulance, they took my blood pressure and I said, oh my gosh, I don't like that. That's kind of high. And the woman in the ambulance says, oh no, this is really good. For what you're going through, this is really good blood pressure. And I can't help but wonder if it's because Brenda was keeping me so calm because she was right there with me. They took me, oh, and I asked Brenda when they were wheeling me out, I said, should I let my daughters know something happened? She says, yes. Send your daughters a text, let them know something has happened and that you've got to go to the ER. While I was in the ambulance, my daughter who lives in Connecticut called and the woman in the back with me talked to her for me because I didn't know what to say and I had no idea what to do. And they got me into the hospital in the emergency room and checking all my vitals and I have to compare it to one other time when I had to go to another hospital because I was having chest pains. And the people who came to my house got annoyed with me because I, it was the middle of winter and got home from work about seven o'clock at night. It was cold. I hadn't turned my heat on yet. They had the door open and I started shivering and shaking and they got annoyed with me that I wouldn't hold still so they could get the little sticky things on for your heart. Whereas at UConn Health, and I told these people at my house, I was cold. Could I have a blanket? And they wouldn't let me have one. At UConn Health, I told them I was chilly. Could I have my jacket over me? And while they're hooking me up, no problem. They put their jacket on me so I wouldn't sit there and shiver and be cold.
Jeannie, can you summarize?
Yes, I just want to ask you to please, 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 please support UConn Health in any way you can. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for that incredible story. It really shows the importance and how important they, the patients are to the staff at UConn. So thank you very much for your, for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lauren Doniger.
Oops.
Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Lauren Doniger. I'm a professor at Gateway Community College and faculty chair of the Faculty Staff Council. Connecticut can only prosper if everyone has equal opportunity. True equal opportunity will require deep levels of repair of social, economic and educational structures that are steeped in systemic racism. I hope that as a state and a nation, we begin to do that hard work. I fear that we, it will be a long time before a black child born in New Haven truly has the same opportunities as a white child born in Greenwich. These deep inequities cannot be solved with simple solutions like the Board of Regents' proposal to eliminate developmental education by cloaking it in the language of equity. While we do this long overdue work, we must create opportunities for all citizens to access higher education. The front door to that opportunity is the community colleges. I implore you to fund the community colleges as if people's futures depend on them, because they do. I implore you to fund the community colleges as if the economic recovery of Connecticut depends on them, because it does. As you think about the millions of dollars allocated to the community colleges, I urge you to carefully interrogate where and how those dollars are being spent. I urge you to question the funding of a monstrous bloated centralized bureaucracy with a blank checkbook for high-priced consultants. I hope you wonder about the salaries of a grotesque tier of system president, one community college president, regional president, CEO, vice president, associate vice president, directors, managers, deans, associate deans, provost, all paid to work in buildings without students. I hope that you question why the system office at sixty-one Woodlands has a bigger budget than any of the actual colleges. Rather than funding an army of administrators, please secure a stable source of funding for debt-free community college, also known as PACT. Please consider how the current model of PACT, which requires full-time enrollment, disadvantages some students. I will tell you about Tanisha as her story is representative of many of our students. When I met with Tanisha for advising, she reported concern about her progress in some classes. Tanisha has two young children, works full-time, juggles homeschooling and has unstable childcare, all while taking a full-time course load. Tanisha was taking a full load because it was required for PACT. By trying to access PACT, Tanisha was set up to fail. Students who attend full-time have better graduation rates because they have the luxury and privilege of attending full-time, though it should not be a luxury or a privilege. I hope that you will work with faculty groups to identify ways for debt-free college to lift all students. How we are taxed and how we spend those dollars reflect what we value as a people. Connecticut will not prosper until we are all valued equally and there is equal opportunity. We will not prosper until the humblest yet most impactful form of higher education is funded and valued like UConn and until the faculty at the community colleges are given the same respect and authority as those of our colleagues at UConn. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lauren. You did that wonderfully under three minutes and there was a lot of messages in there. I think we got most of them. I, I'll say that, but thank you and yay, yay, yay Gateway. Next, Jennifer Witness.
Yeah, that is a tough act to follow and I will try to be brief because I feel a bit like a broken record here. Good evening, members of the Appropriations Committee. I'm Jen Witness. I'm president of the Connecticut Conference of Independent Colleges, representing the fifteen private nonprofit colleges in Connecticut. And I'm here tonight to advocate for additional funding for the Roberta Willis Scholarship Program. The scholarship program, as many of you know, is administered by the Office of Higher Ed and provides need-based and need merit grants to student, Connecticut students that attend Connecticut public and private colleges. Students attending independent colleges receive about seventeen percent of this funding from this program. And earlier tonight, the first panel, some of you may not have gotten on, so you should rewind and, and check it out, but you got to hear from some really incredible students who are beneficiaries of this grant program. As many of you know, and you can read in my written testimony, this program hasn't seen an increase in funding in many years and has been cut nearly fifty percent since two thousand and eleven. The independent colleges have actually seen more drastic reductions during this time with aid going to students, independent colleges being reduced seventy percent over the last ten years. Connecticut now lags the region and the nation in its investment in need-based financial aid compared to, you know, how much states are spending in need-based financial aid. Connecticut only spends about three percent of its overall higher ed funding on financial aid. The cuts to this program have led to a significant amount of unmet need in our state. In two thousand and nineteen, the latest when we have data available, institutions reported to OHE that nearly forty thousand Connecticut students enrolled who are eligible to receive a grant, but less than thirty percent of those students actually received a grant. The pandemic, as you can imagine, has only exacerbated the level of need among students enrolled as many of our member institutions have outlined in their written testimony that you can find online. I just want to note that, you know, many folks think that the demographics of students attending independent colleges is not as diverse as some of the publics, but in fact, in the last ten years, our enrollment has grown about sixteen percent and the percent of our students enrolled who are eligible for the Pell Grant has grown nearly ninety percent. Connecticut independent colleges now roll just about, enroll about the same amount of Pell-eligible students as the four-year publics, right around thirty percent. Additional grant funding is truly needed during these difficult times. Our students and our institutions are challenged similarly by the pandemic as the public college leaders articulated for you earlier today. We have also suffered hundreds of millions of dollars in lost revenue and new costs related to operating in a pandemic, but federal funding has only covered approximately thirty percent of our expenses. The number of financial appeals that our aid directors are seeing has grown significantly. We are fortunate that the governor allocated six point eight million dollars in federal funding to the Roberta Willis Scholarship Program in the fall, but student need has not diminished since that time and we're just asking that the Appropriations Committee consider increasing appropriation the same six point eight million dollars for the biennium so that students and institutions don't face a reduction in financial aid over the next two years. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jen, and thank you for your advocacy every year. Thank you very much. The students appreciate you. Thank you. Kalina Sisankar? Did I mess that up? Yes, I did.
Nope. You got it. Yes.
Go right ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm Kalina Sisankar. I teach philosophy at Gateway and I'm the current chair of the Faculty Advisory Committee to the BOR. In the last ten years, the state has cut per funding student at the state colleges and universities by about twenty percent and compared with the late eighties, it's reduced about fifty percent. Now, as we struggle to maintain our footing with the challenges of COVID, we have even less support than we had just a year ago. Twenty million dollars that covered unfunded pension liabilities for the past two years has not been renewed. Our system floated PACT last semester but doesn't have a stable funding source and the costs are rising as new students enroll. One time pandemic funding was helpful, helpful and truly appreciated, but sustained funding is needed and until enrollment levels return to normal. The system was already short-funded and on a path towards eliminating all twelve community colleges to replace them with a single mega institution to reduce costs, an effort to make good on the pledge by Mr. Ojekian made to the Higher Education Committee a couple of years ago that he wouldn't close any college locations. And yet, the system's December finance report indicated that without increased funding, the cost of the very restructure justified by preserving locations put those locations at risk once again. So we've gotten to the point that our best efforts, no matter how dramatic, cannot compensate for the inadequate support of public higher ed. As state funding levels have steadily decreased, students of color compose a larger and larger portion of our state student body. The number of black and brown students more than doubled between two thousand and three and two thousand and thirteen and now at the community colleges, more than half of our students identify as non-white. The majority of our students qualify for Pell Grants. Now, it doesn't matter why those two trends coincide. What matters is that we haven't noticed or that if we haven't noticed, we haven't chosen to act. But in a state like this one, the claim that we cannot afford it is not an empirical claim. It's a moral statement. That enrollment affects us so much. It's a function of the fact that we rely more and more on tuition to sustain us. Increased reliance on tuition coupled with the way that we cover unfunded pension liabilities means that we don't just pass on more of our current costs to students these days. We pass on the cost of our past unfulfilled liabilities. Our students who are largely of the demographic that bear the heaviest tax burden in our state are not only underserved by this, but are effectively taxed again when they bear the cost of those enjoying the fruits of their lives, the kinds of lives to which they aspire. Overreliance on tuition is reflected in our priorities of necessity. More and more, we see policies centered around maximizing credit attempts and incentivizing full-time enrollment. A college that builds aspirational credit attempts into its financial projections is one that creates an incentive structure that risks passing students along for the sake of its very survival. Colleges at which the majority of our students don't have the privilege of attending full-time should not invest more in those with that privilege. We cannot fulfill our mission if we can't start moving in another, in another direction. Our financial constraints change the very nature of our schools. At the community colleges, our mission is complex and it's tempting to believe that the narrative of failure that has surrounded the system justifies a withdrawal of commitments to our schools. It's the opposite. Our narrative of failure is due to the absence of adequate measures of success for community colleges and the fact that we've been operating on way too little for way too long. It's clear to see that we need to do more to support these valuable expectations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your advocacy and yay, Gateway. Okay, next, Adam Burgoyne.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to start by saying thank you to the committee co-chairs, ranking members and members for allowing me the opportunity to submit testimony to the Appropriations Committee tonight. My name is Adam Burgoyne and I'm a registered nurse and an assistant professor at Connecticut State University, Central Connecticut State University in the Department of Nursing. I began teaching in the nursing program as a full-time faculty member in August of two thousand and twenty, after spending just over six years at the bedside. My areas of training include post-operative surgical, cardiology, emergency and trauma. I have also held positions in leadership and management and have a master's degree in nursing, leadership and management and I'm currently working on obtaining a doctorate in nursing practice with a focus on educational leadership. My time at the bedside showed me many things, but most importantly, I witnessed the resilience of nurses and other healthcare providers as we worked together to treat the sick, injured and vulnerable residents of Connecticut. The pandemic has highlighted this resilience and has also shed light on the toll that healthcare takes on those at the bedside. Prior to the pandemic, we were making headway on the nursing shortage in Connecticut, in large part due to the number of nursing programs at higher education institutions throughout the state. However, the pandemic has brought about a frightening amount of attrition from the front lines. Many nurses are leaving larger hospitals in favor of positions away from the bedside altogether or in less strenuous positions. The prospect of a mass exodus on the front lines is dangerous for multiple reasons. I'd like you to think about the fact that as the nursing population ages and moves away from the bedside, there will be fewer experienced nurses to teach incoming nurses. That fact compounded with younger nurses leaving due to the strain of the system and the state could be poised on the brink of disaster. With this in mind, your support for Connecticut State Universities has never been more important than it is now. As our country and our state continues to battle a pandemic that has already taken the lives of more than a half a million Americans, decimated businesses, impacted education and strained healthcare to the brink of failure, support for the full funding of Connecticut Public Higher Education will make the difference between universities that are well-equipped to educate and train the students who are the future of our state and universities and universities that merely go through the motions of issuing certificates and degrees. Please bear in mind that accreditation of vital programs such as nursing depend on well-funded universities to be able to provide top-notch education to the future of the profession. I thank you for your time and consideration and for hearing the concerns of students, faculty and the general public. And I appreciate your support and the support of the Appropriations Committee for Public Higher Education in Connecticut.
Thank you. Thank you and thank you for your, for your testimony, sir. Thank you. Jacob Chamberlain? Jacob, are you muted? There you go. Jacob, I still don't hear you. Try it again. I don't think you have enough bandwidth or whatever is coming off. Connect. Okay, there you go. Try that. No, no. I'm not sure what. Sorry. Try going out and coming back in. Can you hear me? Try going out and coming back in and when you come back in, we'll, we'll move you into the next spot. Okay? Try it again. Thank you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Oh. I hope he can get back in. We should have moved him back to the attendees and then he could have left. I'm not sure he can leave as a panelist, but we'll see.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Matthew Baker?
Not present, ma'am chair. The next spot is fifty-two.
Tim Parrish.
Hi. Thanks for hearing our testimony tonight. I'm Professor Tim Parrish and I've been at Southern Connecticut State University for twenty-six years. As an educator of thirty-nine years, I'm here to say that in terms of productive, hard-working citizens and devoted teaching and research faculty, you can't get a better return on your investment than with the CSCU system. As an example, graduates of our Master of Fine Arts and Creative Writing Program and our undergraduate creative writing program have published over ninety books, some of which have been reviewed in the New York Times Book Review, The New Yorker, the LA Times and on NPR, have been on best of lists from O Magazine to Esquire and have been made into films. These books are written by working and middle-class writers of diverse ethnicity, age and sexual and gender orientation, writers whose gifts and dreams may not have been realized and whose stories may not have been heard were it not for access to our top-notch, affordable university. These works deal with important topics such as surviving sexual assault and combat experience in Iraq, detailing immigrant experience in Waterbury and experiencing the challenges and joys of being a black woman whose path leads her to become a gender studies professor. All of these remarkable writers graduate with portable skills necessary to a modern workforce. As for faculty, we care deeply about our students and many of us work an average of sixty hours a week preparing and teaching students from first year to graduate level, grading, corresponding, holding courses, advising, scheduling, counseling, encouraging, helping plan careers and networking, advocating, running internships, writing recommendation letters, organizing extracurricular events, directing programs and much more. For the good of our departments and universities, we serve on committees that better the education of our students. We negotiate with administrators to balance education with the bottom line and we continuously prepare in-house and outside reports for accreditation and evaluation of effectiveness. Because semesters are chock-full with teaching two courses more than the national average, we do most of our research and creative activity, which are treasure requirements of our jobs during our so-called breaks. Without this work, we would not be informed teachers. Having been a first-generation college student from a blue-collar family myself, I love the privilege of helping underrepresented, underserved citizens find the richer lives that they deserve. Sadly though, the thing hovering over testimony tonight is the Board of Regents' contract proposal to the four regional universities, a contract proposal that threatens our students' futures and the continuation of our mission. If you haven't already, implore you to read the proposal carefully. If you haven't already, implore you to read the proposal carefully and see what an extreme document it is. Thanks so much for your time and service. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your testimony and, and, and everything that you do working with kids at Southern. Thank you. Next, we have Seth Freeman. Seth Freeman?
Hello. Thank you, Senator Austin, Representative Walker, Senator Hartley, Representative Dayton and Nolan, and members of, of the Appropriations Committee for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Seth Freeman, and I'm a professor of computer information systems at Capital Community College. I'm here to express the importance of robustly funding Connecticut's twelve community colleges. At Capital Community College, I have the honor and privilege to work with remarkable students who overcome significant barriers each day to obtain their college degrees and certificates. Our students at Capital face significant academic barriers to success, including insufficient academic preparation and the need for remediation in math and English, and non-academic barriers, including food and housing insecurity, lack of transportation and childcare and family and work-life demands. To address these barriers, educators at Capital and across the community college system create novel, unique and customized services to help our students. These services and solutions require funding at the college level. Tutors, advisors, coaches, mental health specialists, career development specialists, professional staff and faculty are all needed to support our students and their career and academic success. The reality, however, in our education system is that we have systems of inequity that our community colleges are attempting to remedy. With over five hundred thousand individuals dying or dead due to, to, due to the coronavirus pandemic, it is apparent that our systems are not serving the needs of our residents across the, the, the country. I firmly believe at this point in time, we have to ask ourselves, both individually and at the state, how much suffering and death will we tolerate? How long will we accept the despicable and detestable racial wealth gap in our society? At, at what point will we say enough is enough? So if, if we want to improve the student outcome that for our community college students, we need programs that recognize our students' different backgrounds and prior learning experiences. We need, we need to develop flexible and adaptable, adaptable curriculum. If we want to improve our student outcomes, we have to invest in community college campuses. We have to invest into, in, for, into services and resources for our students. And, and frankly, we have to obviously invest into our public K-12 education system where our students come from. More broadly, i- if we want to improve outcomes, we have to fix the persistent equity gaps in our state, like ending school segregation, systemic racism and systemic poverty. I, I appreciate the hard work of the Appropriations Committee to try to address these deep-seated and difficult issues. Please continue to do your part to invest in all the public services in our state and certainly our community colleges and public universities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your testimony and your dedication as a, as a professor at Capital. Thank you. Have a good day. Next, we have Elle van der Mark.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening, members of the Appropriations Committee. I have to begin this evening by honoring the students who testified this evening. Like the community college students who boldly shared their stories to convey the importance of a community college education and the power of education to transform lives. It is clear tonight that funding higher education in Connecticut is important. I too began at a community college while caring for two teenagers and was the sole caregiver for my mother and grandmother both. After having served through the first Gulf War and then earning my plumbing contractor's license, I eventually found my way to a community college when my body could no longer meet the physical demands of my trade. I know the power of education to transform lives because my presence here tonight is a result of it. My name is Elle Van der Mark, and I have been a professor of history and political science at Is Nantucket Community College for eleven years, and I appreciate the opportunity to convey the importance of funding higher education in Connecticut. During my tenure teaching, I have not known a time that we were not in crisis. I was hired after the exodus of retirements during the Great Recession, and at my beloved college, we have pivoted from one crisis to the next. I am testifying in support of House Bill sixty-four oh four, pact funding. While funding for the state's community colleges has been volatile, surrendering that funding to a system office who services and serves no students must stop. We can begin by eliminating the millions of dollars being funneled away from our vulnerable students and to the Board of Regents, the System Office and the behemoth that is called the One College. Connecticut needs to do better for its citizens, and I am here asking for you to please help. Governor Lamont reported there was a surplus in year one and another anticipated in year two during his budget address. He went on to say, "We have the largest reserves in the state's history," and posits the credit agencies increasingly positive ratings for the state as evidence. However, he acknowledges the pandemic has sharpened the disparities for the people who are struggling in Connecticut and specifically admits access to education is a particular vulnerability. And many of the students we heard tonight are a testament to that need. Those vulnerabilities can begin to be addressed by including part-time students and dreamers in pact. Broadening who we support in their educational pursuits is both a racial and a justice issue. We can do better by including part-timers and dreamers in pact funding. Governor Lamont importantly acknowledges the budget is a representation of our core values. I agree, and those values must prioritize racial disparities in access to community college education. We need a commitment to the students, staff and faculty at the community colleges that demonstrates the budget is in fact a moral document. In order for that, for it to be that, we must address racial injustice and equity through funding education at every level, but particularly the community colleges. The community college, each college, needs line item increases that are encumbered to the college. The staff and faculty at Connecticut's twelve theoretically, albeit barely independently accredited community colleges, watch in horror as tens of millions of dollars are siphoned away from students.
Elle, you have to sum up your, over the three minutes.
I'm here tonight because the students we heard from, all of them are advocating that we must come together and do better. We can begin by educating all the good people of Connecticut because our state depends on an educated and informed citizenry, and so too does the democracy of these United States.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Kathleen Murphy? Kathleen Murphy?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Thank you. Good evening, members of the Appropriations Committee. I am providing firsthand testimony about why it is so important to invest in higher education in Connecticut. I graduated from Gateway Community College in nineteen eighty-five. I became a mother at eighteen years old and was a first-generation college student. I wanted to earn a degree that would allow me to pursue my dream of being a healthcare provider while earning a living wage and having health insurance. The faculty and staff at Gateway Community College guided me through the beginning of my college experience. The staff members in the Financial Aid Office helped me apply for a Pell Grant and counseled me about my need for applying for food stamps and WIC, Women, Infants and Children, funding. I needed their help. I didn't know how to do any of this. They were right there in New Haven, ready to support me. I would have given up without their assistance. I wouldn't have traveled all the way to Hartford for help. They went above and beyond their job requirements. The faculty and staff at Gateway cared about me and provided guidance and mentoring long after graduation. I graduated with an Associate's Degree in Nuclear Medicine Technology and was immediately employed at Yale New Haven Hospital and was able to support my family. I did not need food stamps or WIC anymore. The faculty and staff at Gateway made a significant impact on my life and on the life of my family members. I am so proud to say that today I am a professor at Gateway Community College. I love watching my students earn degrees and certificates, sorry, that will enable them to provide for their families while working in careers that they are passionate about. Sorry. Community colleges are the gateway to successful futures for so many students in Connecticut. Our community colleges need adequate funding so they can continue to help students like me. Our graduates are vital resources for Connecticut businesses. Please support our students by increasing the monies appropriated to community colleges and not the one community college, but all of the twelve community colleges. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for being so compassionate about your students and how important they are. Thank you. Have a good evening. Bev Breakman? Bev?
Hi, I'm here. Yep. Good evening, Senator Austin, Representative Walker, Senator Hartley, ranking members Minor and Franz and members of the Appropriations Committee. My name is Beverly Breakman, and I am the Regional Director of UAW Region Nine A. We have thirty-five thousand active members living and working in New England, New York City and Puerto Rico. I'm here tonight on behalf of our members at the University of Connecticut Graduate Employees Union Local Sixty-nine Fifty to testify on the higher education budget. UAW members who work at UConn include more than twenty-three hundred graduate student teaching and research assistants and postdoctoral researchers. TAs teach, mentor and help to steer towards success thousands of undergraduate students every year. Research assistants and postdoctoral researchers conduct groundbreaking research that helps to raise more than two hundred and fifty million dollars in grant funding every year, designed to improve people's lives and health. Support and continued investment in UConn sustains development of a highly skilled workforce, maintains its reputation as a world-class university, allows Connecticut to attract the best and brightest, and supports our economy by bringing jobs and growth opportunity. Seven of our UAW members have submitted written testimony about why they came to UConn, whether they are researching or teaching nuclear astrophysics, COVID-nineteen, climate's impact on human evolution and migration in Africa, the arts or digital information literacy. They all came to their respective programs because of UConn's world-class programs. Some wrote that they moved from another state and have decided to stay here and make their lives here in Connecticut, and they're grateful that they can stay in a state and live near their families. We need to properly fund academic excellence at UConn to continue to attract the best and the brightest. As total support declines, UConn must increasingly rely on tuition revenue to cover costs. Maintaining our, our investments as a state is critical to avoid disproportionately shifting costs to students and working families. We urge this committee and this legislature to continue to support a state budget that allows UConn to maintain and grow its education, research and overall service to our students and our residents, its employees and its students. Thank you.
Thank you, Bev, for your, for your testimony. Thank you and have a good evening. Next, we have Drew Harris.
Hi, I'm Drew Harris. I'm a professor of management at Central Connecticut State University. I want to share three thoughts with you about why we should increase funding for the CSU universities. So it starts with quality. Most of our programs that have discipline-based accreditation have it at the highest quality. You know, our engineering, our schools of business, our social work and so forth, same level of accreditation that UConn and private universities have. But those accrediting agencies need two things from us, among many others, but they want adequate funding for faculty research and resources and equipment and so forth, and they want reliable funding. Well, we've been cut, 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 cut for many years now, and that doesn't look particularly reliable, and I think we've been cut down to the bone now. You cut further, even this flat austerity thing is, is, I don't know if we're going to be able to maintain our accreditations. I worry about that. And if we lose our accreditations, we get to the second point, which is that we need to have quality choices at multiple levels in the state, quality public choices, the community colleges, UConn and Central. Central fits in an important area there because there are lots of really good students in our state who want to go to a small university or want to have a smaller classroom, who want to have more interactions with their faculty, who want to stay home, who want to keep their job. So we need to have the CSU system strong, not have them have the perception of lower quality if we lose accreditation. And frankly, the cuts we've, we've had have undermined that. And that leads to the third thing. If those high-quality students can't make a choice of a public school here in the state and they don't want to go to a big school, they're going to leave in even greater numbers. You know, we have brain drain. It's one of the real crises in the state. And you know, our state produces some of the best high school students in the country. We're regularly in the top three to five of public school systems in the country, but we lose those students. So I'm asking you to invest in the CSU system so that those students who want something different, that middle ground that we occupy, high quality, that they choose to stay in the state, invest in us. It's an investment in our future. Our students, frankly, are our way out of the pandemic recession. So thank you. Please find us.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony and thank you for your very direct request. Thank you, sir. Have a good day. Number fifty-nine, is fifty-nine here? Yep. John Board?
Yep. Good evening, Representative Walker. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Good to see you, ma'am. Good evening, Senator Austin, Representative Walker, ranking member Minor, ranking member France and members of the Appropriations Higher Education Subcommittee. First of all, let me just like make a note, Madam Chair, we're moving at a good clip this evening, so maybe we should just keep the Appropriations Higher Education night on Zoom in the future, given how it's been in the past, but thank you for letting me testify this evening on the governor's budget. My name's John Board, a graduate of the CSCU system and former member of the Student Advisory Committee. I'm generally supportive of all of the governor's budget recommendations for higher education this year, but I have two main concerns. One is pension funding and the other is the pact program. My understanding from listening to the CSCU presentation earlier this morning is that the pension allocation was not included in the governor's budget. Our state's heading towards a cliff when it comes to obligations in the out years starting in two thousand and twenty-five and continuing through the second half of this decade. It would be wise for the General Assembly to get a handle on our obligations, especially if we are heading towards an economic boom coming out of the COVID-nineteen recession. As members of this committee know, especially those who serve on the Higher Education and Employment Advancement Committee, I have reservations about the pact program for the last several years now. To address these issues, I've consistently put forth my own holistic interdisciplinary and bipartisan proposal called Tuition Contracting, providing our students and graduates with a fighting chance. Don't get me wrong, I believe that, I believe and share the, and share the overarching common goal of finding a way to make our universities more affordable. This three-part proposal is based on tuition contracting, which allows students, which provides the state predictability to students, and in return, students agree to attend the system and get a predictable tuition. Two, it's implementing Learn Here, Live Here, allowing students to save up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for their first home. And three, collaboration between the banking and higher ed committees as we examine ways to bring down the Chesla loan rates. Lastly, I would, lastly, I would ask this committee not to reduce any funding for extracurricular activities or, as I believe that they should be called, co-curricular activities in light of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Students need to have the opportunity to re-engage with their peers after a difficult year and a half, year, year and a half away from each other. And co-curricular activities provide that opportunity for our students. I don't see that the committee is taking questions this evening, but if they, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer any of them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony. What we, we have been doing is contacting people. Did you submit a test, a written testimony?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
So let members of the committee will contact people if they want to follow up with some of the information that has been presented to us. So thank you.
Thank you so much, and I do think we should keep Zoom going because it seems like we're moving at a group clip as compared to last year. Thanks so much. Have a good evening.
Okay, have a good day. Rachel. And I'll never be able to pronounce that last name. Rachel, number sixty-one, Rachel from Gateway?
Yes, good evening.
Yes. Go right ahead.
I'm Rachel Shettenhelm, and I'm a full-time developmental mathematics faculty member at Gateway Community College. I have submitted written testimony but must keep my remarks brief as I am proctoring an online exam as we speak. It's appropriate that I have this conflict because it is my new reality as a faculty member. I have student hours on Sunday afternoons, and I proctored tests at 7:00 this morning and 7:00 tonight. I'm spending more time preparing for courses, but I'm very proud of myself and my colleagues for still reaching out to students and meeting them where they are and meeting their needs. I'm distressed, however, that I am being asked by system managers to create math courses that will be used in the one college on a voluntary basis. I'm here tonight to urge you to look at how the funds are being spent to make improvements for our community colleges. I'd like you to make sure that the money is going to system-wide improvements that are done thoughtfully and are going to resources that are making the folks who are making the transfer and student success decisions rather than bloated bureaucracy. So I just urge you to look at my written testimony and look at all the problematic ways that faculty members are being stretched to our very limits, including doing system work without compensation. Thank you. I'm going to get back to my students.
Thank you, and thank you, and take care of the students tonight. Thank you for your testimony. Lisa Lankor?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Lankor, and I'm a professor and chairperson of the Computer Science Department at Southern Connecticut State University. Three times a year, computer science students graduate from our bachelor's and our master's degree programs, and our graduates often stay in our state and provide tech talent needed in industries across Connecticut. We have a rigorous program that follows ABD standard, which is our external accrediting body, and it's the same organization that oversees other CS programs like New York Tech, Tufts, and MIT. Central is also ABD accredited, and it takes a lot of work to make sure that we align our programs with the needs of industry at the rigor of the national accreditation standard. But tonight's testimony is not about our curriculum or any of the details about our program or our awesome faculty. It is instead about just one of our students whom I would like to highlight tonight, and it was hard to just pick one. Five years ago, Tiffany Edwards was a senior in high school and was shopping around for schools to pursue a major in chemistry. In the spring, Tiffany attended an open house at Southern to learn more about the university and the chemistry program. She happened to stumble into a session that I was holding about computer science. Tiffany, like many of the students that attend these sessions, have no idea what computer science is. And as she learned about the tech field and how pervasive it is across every industry, Tiffany was intrigued. When she got home that night, she applied to Southern and immediately declared her major as computer science. She chose Southern because it was affordable for her family, and she was excited to be a part of our community. I was fortunate enough to teach Programming 1 to Tiffany in her first year at Southern. She, like so many of her peers, have never written a line of code prior to coming to college, and this must change, and I hope you support the numerous efforts of working with the CS4CT Initiatives, a committee that I'm serving on at the state level, to make sure that our Connecticut students learn computer science in kindergarten and every year after that in high school. Connecticut is way behind compared to other states, and our department is working on trying to fix that as we begin to train K through 12 teachers. But let me get back to Tiffany. Within the first weeks of my class, Tiffany took off. She was creating coding birthday wishes to her friends as she learned about loops and conditional statements. She collaborated with students in her CS class as well as those in the honors program. And as a student of color, she became a leader in our program and was encouraging other marginalized groups to pursue computer science as she learned more and more about this field. Two years later, Tiffany was worried about what to do for her honors thesis, and she didn't think she was ready for research, but we told her she was. And she began working with my colleague, Dr. Hossein, in his machine learning and biometrics lab, where she was actively involved with both graduate and undergraduate students working on cybersecurity research. In less than a year's time, we encouraged Tiffany to apply for the National Center for Women in Technology's Aspirations Research Award. And she didn't think her work was good enough, but we told her it was. And you know what? Her project won the national award, next to other winners from Harvard, Stanford, and the University of Southern California. Today, Tiffany is a graduate student where she earned a scholarship for her work in cybersecurity research, and she's helping to lead the New Haven chapter of WISIS, a national organization for women in cybersecurity. And there, I'll wrap it up. There are not many women in CS, and there are fewer in cybersecurity, and then hardly any women of color. And Tiffany is going to continue to be a leader in this space. These opportunities would not have been possible without funding from our state and from her research scholarships, and we need your support to make sure opportunities that Tiffany experienced will continue to exist. We believed in her when she didn't believe in herself, and we hope that you will continue to believe in and support the CSU system and who changes lives on a daily basis.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Brenna Harvey. Brenna Harvey?
Hi, I'm a Hartford resident, a nonprofit administrator, an associate artistic director at the CT Comedy Theater in downtown Hartford, and a current MFA student in fiction writing at Southern Connecticut State University. I'm here because I want to speak about the incredible contributions my Southern professors have made to my creative and professional life, and how an accessible, affordable, high-quality graduate education has helped me achieve my formerly distant dream of professional authorship. I have previous experience with graduate studies, having obtained a master's degree in sociology from the University of Connecticut in 2013, and then working as a doctoral candidate researcher for the next five years. I applied to Southern's MFA program in 2019 based on its reputation for strong mentorship and classroom instruction, and I have found the faculty support in my department to be unparalleled. Since enrolling at Southern, I have received five professional publications. Since the start of 2021 alone, I have published two pieces and outlets that pay professional market rates for original fiction. Not only does this put me in the enviable position of being able to actually pay for my own life expenses through my literary output, but it also qualifies me for membership in professional organizations that provide connections to literary agents, editors, and publishing houses, which dramatically increases my chances of publishing novel-length works that can find an enthusiastic audience and be part of larger, significant cultural conversations. I attribute this success in large part to my Southern professors, who read their students' material with a level of depth and attention that is unlike anything else I've ever experienced in my post-secondary education. This statement applies equally to my creative writing classes, where professors' attention helps student work become immersive, thought-provoking explorations of individual psychology and human struggle, and academic classes, where students are held to incredibly high standards and treated with the seriousness and respect of true university colleagues. My professors are also enviably equipped to facilitate contentious classroom debates, helping students dissect, understand, and honestly portray prejudice and inequality without unthinkingly reinforcing it in their writing. In an era where political and partisan divides threaten the very fabric of our democracy, the value of instructors who can facilitate these kinds of conversations cannot be underestimated. While Southern's courses are more financially accessible than those of many colleges and universities, that accessibility is extremely precarious. And though our faculty expends every possible effort to obtain funding and financial support for our graduate students, many of our graduate programs, including the Creative Writing MFA, don't offer funding packages that are competitive with other major universities. It is my greatest fear that Connecticut officials don't understand the incredible value of our state university graduate programs, and that ruthless budgetary decisions will lead to tuition increases, fee hikes, and crushing inhumane teaching loads for our faculty members, which will devastate their ability to provide high-quality instruction and mentorship. I wanted to provide my experiential evidence that accessible higher education in all fields, including the arts, is a boon to the professional skills, financial security, and quality of life for all of our residents. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony tonight. Thank you, and have a good evening. Next, Sarah Vetter?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sarah Vetter, and I'm currently a senior at Southern Connecticut State University. I'm grateful for my experience at Southern and the opportunities afforded to me. I come from a hard-working, blue-collar family, and I'm the first in my family to attend a university. When I first started SCSU at 19, I was taking care of my sick mother while we were being evicted from our home. I have worked every day since I was 14, and I know the crippling weight of feeling as though my aspirations aren't obtainable. Without the affordability of Southern, I would not have been able to attend college. I never imagined or expected anyone to believe in me like the professors at Southern have. From English to photography to philosophy, and even to my worst subjects like statistics and political science, I discovered inspiration and support at every turn. During my second and third years, I had the unique opportunity to work as a peer mentor, a position offered only to students showing academic excellence, and excellence achieved because professors believed in me. As a peer mentor, I worked alongside professors, helping incoming students transition into college. I participated in class discussions, gave lessons on time management, taught new students about resources available on campus, and overall showed them how to thrive academically. At Southern, I have participated in social justice events. I have spoken on panels regarding trauma and addiction recovery. I have had poems, stories, and artwork published in Southern's journals and newspaper. I have networked with professors, grad students, alumni, and peers. Creative connections I utilize now and know will continue. For the past two semesters, I have worked as a teaching intern, and earlier this afternoon taught my own lesson to a sophomore-level class. This internship has prepared me to attend graduate school and follow my dreams of being a teacher at the collegiate level. In my final semester as an undergraduate, I am working with an advisor to complete an honors thesis. This is rigorous work that includes meeting with my advisor weekly to discuss drafts, talk through challenges, and sometimes just receive encouragement. In the course of this past year of working on my thesis, I have surprised myself at how far I've come as a writer, and I find it hard to believe that professors would be as available at any other university. I'm grateful to the faculty here for believing in my potential, and I'm forever indebted for the lessons and experiences this university has granted me. The faculty here are the kind who agree to meet for coffee simply so that I can pick their brain. They understand that Southern students are built differently. We are full-time students, and we are parents, and we are US veterans, and many of us bear the burden of little to no financial support. This school is not just affordable and accessible. It is quality education that has made me into the academically successful, aspirational, empathetic, and active community member I am today. This is not simply a university I will graduate from and leave behind. It is the place I dream of returning to as a teacher myself someday. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you. Regina, Ms. Ccola?
Hi there.
Hi.
Thank you for having me. Two years ago, when I was a senior in high school choosing which school to attend, I chose Southern Connecticut State University because I didn't feel like I was just another number. Now, as a sophomore studying English and creative writing in the honors college, I truly know that I am not just another number at Southern. In the semester and a half that I spent on campus pre-pandemic, I connected with advisors, professors, and faculty members whom I consider to be mentors. My relationships with these people have only grown as we've shifted online and then partly back on ground, and I know that I would not be having the experience that I am now at any other school. My mentors at Southern are my biggest supporters. They have introduced me to opportunities and even courses of study and career paths that I didn't know were possible. Last February, I attended an alumni event through the English department. Afterward, I stayed to talk to an alumnus about her career choice. As I was telling her about my own ideas for my future, I looked to my right and saw a professor whom I hadn't met before, Professor Bayra. As I had been talking, he was writing notes down on a napkin in a completely un-creeepy way, I'll add. He told me to email him and set up a meeting because he thought we could connect, and he wanted to advise me. Professor Bayra has since become one of my closest mentors at Southern. I met with him during the second week of March. We talked about my passion for creative writing, and he brainstormed ideas of future internships and careers. While we were talking, Professor Bayra made tea. We sipped, and I sat in his office. I felt the spark of opportunity and possibility of new avenues and ideas that I had never considered nor knew existed. For example, while he and my advisor, Professor Shea, listened to my interests and proposed that I study arts administration when the minor is approved at Southern, which it just was. I had never heard of this course of study, but because of them, I now want to pursue it as a potential career and am minoring in it. I sat in Professor Bayra's office for nearly two hours. I only left because Professor Shea came upstairs to tell me that our class was starting down below. I hadn't finished my tea, so I took that mug that Professor Bayra had given me, and I promised I'd wash it out and return it to him the next day. That evening, however, COVID-19 sent all of campus home. I kept that mug for the duration of quarantine and finally returned it to Professor Bayra this past semester. I think of this day in Professor Bayra's office and relish every moment of it. He listened intently as I voiced my ambitions and my uncertainties. He invested time and dedication in me and has continued to do so ever since. Because of Professor Bayra, I have gained experience in the teaching field through an internship and spearheading a new internship program at the Connecticut Mental Health Center and am minoring in arts administration. Conversations and interactions between students and faculty like this one are not rarities at Southern. I have spent hours in professors' offices on the phone and even on FaceTime with them. Throughout the pandemic, I have received sporadic phone calls from Professor Bayra, Professor Shea, and other faculty members just checking in to see how I was doing. Knowing that I matter and that I have people at school who care about me has been invaluable to my college experience and my future. Every student who comes to Southern and other state schools deserves the same level of connection and the opportunity to share tea and discuss their dreams with their professors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Regina. We appreciate your comments. And just so you know, all of us are paying attention, even though the numbers may be small tonight. People go back and listen to what you said. Thank you so much. Up next would be Tamonda Griffiths.
Hi.
Hi, how are you? Go ahead.
My name is Tamonda Griffiths.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Tamonda Griffiths, and I am a senior at Southern Connecticut State University. When I first came to SCSU, I was not entirely sure what I wanted to study. Growing up, my family had stressed the importance of education, specifically higher education, to get ahead in life. So I did not take my decision in picking SCSU as my university lightly. I took heavily into account the university's affordability, various programs, and overall accessibility into regard, and did not find myself disappointed with its offerings. It wasn't until after my sophomore year, following my joining the US military, that I truly pursued my niche at Southern. As a journalism major, I took advantage of exercising the skills I had been learning in the classroom through my participation on SCSU's various student-run publications. It was there that I interacted with teachers, students, and staff members and administrators who had impacted the lives of students on and off campus in very personal, very real ways. I learned of an administrator who hosted an ensemble compromise of students and faculty while juggling the day-to-day to-dos of the Arts and Sciences Department. I learned of theater professors nurturing the dreams and talent of not only their students but of a rising football athlete with a flair for the dramatic. And I learned of professors from all array of majors who took time away from grading, teaching, research, and advising student clubs to advocate and encourage students like myself and the many others you have heard from this evening to use their voice to inspire and quite possibly bring about tangible change at their respective universities. I wish I could say throughout my time at Southern that my college career had always been this far. It has not. Throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, the phrase "essential worker" has been increasingly utilized. I know what an essential worker looks like. I knew before the pandemic. The first I knew of was one everyone praises and shows the most concern for, rightfully so, nurses. I know what told the pandemic wrought for my mother, our family, and her fellow frontline workers when they dawned their scrubs. However, I know even she would agree that the unsung essential workers are teachers. About a week until August 2020, I lost my grandmother of 83 years to her battle with Alzheimer's. It was a battle I'd been struggling to deal with since my start at the university years ago, until it came to a point where I could no longer internally carry the weight of its burden in conjunction with my coursework, my off-campus employment, my on-campus employment, and my military service on my own. When that breaking point hit, I had help in the form of not just counseling services, but professors as well. Professors who took the time to notice a change in their student and resolved to do something about it. Professors who may not have known about the battle implicitly, yet through kind words here and there or a bizarre writing prompt, helped me more than they knew. The tenacity, drive, professionalism, and willingness to show up for every Zoom, WebEx, and Teams meeting by my professors has been astounding. I never lacked in knowledge, words of wisdom, laughs, or displays of concern, sorry, because it displays its common human decency when invited into their living rooms to the computer screen. I am grateful to the faculty who believed in my potential when I humbly declined their praise. I am grateful to the professors who gave me the kick in the pants to realize if I- I am grateful to the professors who gave me the kick in the pants to realize if I want better, I must do better for myself, not for anyone else. At Southern, it is understood that students do not only wear the moniker of student. We are multifaceted human beings who put one foot in front of the other to face every new day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tamonda. I think that you should take a lot of credit for just staying up and doing the public speaking. I know that that's really hard to do. So take credit when you can. It's not often given out, and you should take credit for that. Appreciate it. Up next is Frances Cohen.
Not here, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Next is Audra King.
Hello. My name is Audra King. I'm an Associate Professor of Philosophy and Social Justice at Central Connecticut State University. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and to listen to all of these amazing students and faculty who are speaking before me. As everyone here is aware, higher education is facing a crisis. COVID did not create this crisis, though the pandemic has definitely exacerbated it. And it may worsen still if we do not make responsible choices in the upcoming months. The root of the crisis lies in systematic divestment of state funding in higher education, together with increasing reliance on austerity measures to address funding shortfalls. Despite knowing that higher education is fundamental to the economic health and well-being of the state as well as the country, as well as being essential to equity and racial justice, many states and university boards continually make decisions that erode the accessibility and quality of higher education, causing tuition spikes, hiring freezes, reductions in faculty and staff positions, decreased course offerings, cuts to student services, as well as other problems. The status quo of defunding education and making students and faculty bear the burden of misguided austerity measures is neither sustainable nor fair. And no one is more harmed by these policies than low-income communities and communities of color who are looking to higher education as a means by which to pursue their dreams and to build a better life for themselves and their families, and who hope to do so without incurring mountains of debt. Schools like CCSU, as well as the Three Sister Schools, are intended to serve this role. Many of our students are first-generation college students, low-income students, and students of color who are seeking high-quality and affordable higher education, something that is becoming less and less available in the current climate. Decreased state investment has led to significant increases in tuition. Irresponsible funding decisions by the BOR and the System Office has led to significant increases, sorry, has led to added challenge, and, sorry, I'm messing it. Has led to increases in tuition and impossible irresponsible funding decisions by the BOR, together with COVID challenges, right, pose serious threats to CSU schools' ability to fulfill their mission of offering high-quality, affordable education to communities of color and low-income students across the state of Connecticut. As a result, these students are increasingly facing the choice between postponing or abandoning their hope for a college education on the one hand and incurring rising student loan debts and an education whose value is likely to be sacrificed in the name of austerity, on the other hand. Investing in our schools means investing in our most vulnerable communities. It means investing in equity, social justice, and racial justice. So we stand at this precipice. We can continue on with business as usual, which means that those in power at the state and CSU system office levels claim to value education, equity, and social justice, as well as racial justice, while they make funding decisions that systematically erode all three. Or we can take a different path, one which invests in our schools and emphasizes the needs and interests of our most vulnerable communities. I implore you to choose the latter path. Invest in our communities by investing in the Connecticut State University systems and their faculty, as well as the community colleges across the state of Connecticut. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Audra. And don't worry about sort of sticking on a word. We all do it.
Thank you.
Not to worry. The next up is Mary Ellen Junda.
Yes.
Hi, Mary Ellen. Go ahead.
Thank you, Co-Chair Austin, and Representative Haddad, and members of the Appropriation Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of the continued biennial appropriations to the University of Connecticut. My name is Mary Ellen Junda. I'm a professor of music and currently serve as President of the UConn Chapter of the American Association of University Professors, representing eighteen hundred faculty members and coaches and over six hundred contingent faculty in collective bargaining. The UConn faculty and staff have been absolutely remarkable during this challenging time. Over seven hundred and fifty faculty members have taken courses to improve online teaching and course development. Faculty research has contributed to our knowledge of the COVID-19 virus and increased our protection during this pandemic. We collaborated with UConn Health to get increased supplies of PPE for our frontline workers. We developed a low-cost portable COVID-19 test that has results in minutes. We developed a unique testing system for detecting the virus and waste matter that kept our students safely on campus and that businesses and universities throughout the nation have adopted. And we created the data visualization website that charts the course of the pandemic in Connecticut nationally. We've also curiously analyzed COVID-19 preventive health behaviors to determine responses to imposed health restrictions, which could have major implications for our future health. And this is just a very short list because our faculty have contributed much more. And the most important result of all of this is that there are now over thirty-eight thousand student applications to UConn next year, the most ever, indicating that families view UConn as a high-value, quality educational institution for their hard-earned dollars. However, what's disappointing is that the governor's biennial budget recommendation is less than your FY21 appropriation. Reducing the state investment will have a negative impact on the value of the education UConn provides, financially burden lower and middle-class families, and potentially reduce future applicant pools in a very competitive environment. This is not the time to disinvest, but rather to invest in all higher education, but particularly our flagship university. UConn must play a major role in the recovery and growth of the post-COVID economy. This cross will be dramatically enhanced by investing in research opportunities for faculty to build collaborations in biotech, advancement on manufacturing, IT, pharmaceuticals, engineering, education, and the arts and humanities, ensuring that UConn not only provides a top-notch education for its students, but also a skilled workforce for the state. As a part of this initiative, the cost of fringe benefits, in particular, the thirty-three percent associated with the unfunded legacy costs, needs to be removed from the benefit side of higher education employees so that faculty can be more competitive in securing grant funding nationally and internationally, and particularly through federal grants. I urge the Appropriations Committee to act boldly during this legislative session and to invest in our faculty at the state's flagship university. This investment will benefit everyone in the state of Connecticut. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mary Ellen. Appreciate your testimony. Thanks for sticking with us tonight. Up next is Ashley Lewandowski.
Not present, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ryan Dostie?
Yes.
Hi, Ryan. Go ahead.
Good evening, members of the Appropriation Committee. My name is Ryan Lee Dostie, and I have a Bachelor's of Arts in Ancient History and a Master's of Fine Arts and Fiction Writing from Southern Connecticut State University. And I'm only here today to testify why Southern matters to me and why none of her very much-needed funding be undermined. I'm what you'd probably call a non-traditional student. I first served five years as an active duty in the Army and then came home and attended Southern afterwards. I initially came to Southern because of its well-known and phenomenal Veterans Affairs Office, but I stayed because of everything Southern has to offer her students. As someone transitioning from military to civilian life, Southern quickly felt like home to me. One of the greatest benefits of this school is the professors and the class sizes. I never once felt like just another number, a random student, or someone lost in the masses. I can say with complete confidence that in every course I took, my professors knew my name. Even in courses I didn't like, like math or public speaking, every professor quickly learned my strengths and weaknesses and how to make me grow as a student and independent thinker. Moving from the military world and into the civilian one is very trying for every veteran, but Southern's sense of community and the professor's attention to their students really made that journey less difficult for me. As someone who likes to challenge, Southern provided opportunities for me at every turn. I was able to join the Honors College, which provided courses that were complex, non-traditional, and rigorous. Through the Office of International Education, I studied abroad twice, once at University de Beaune in Dijon for French, and a second time at University Court College in Ireland for Ancient Greek. Anytime I needed or wanted something more challenging or something to better myself, Southern was there to provide for me. It was also through my travels and studying at different universities that I learned very quickly how impressive Southern truly is. Other students expressed great envy at how much FaceTime I got with my professors, how often I was able to work alongside my advisors, and how much feedback I was given on my work. I have worked closely with truly brilliant, knowledgeable, and well-known professors, some internationally, I can report. So I was very excited to return to Southern for my MFA, which is an amazing department and producing fantastic and successful writers. And I can only imagine what that program could do with further funding. It was my thesis that became the foundation for my first critically acclaimed book. I'm currently repped by one of the top literary agencies in the world. My book was published by Hushat, which is one of the top five publishers. And my second book is being looked at by two of the top five publishers. And I only mention any of that because I could say with complete confidence that my success as a writer is only thanks to Southern and to the MFA program. Southern is affordable and accessible, which was something that was very important to me as a disabled veteran. And it is also high-quality education that I will forever be grateful for and proud of. That level of greatness in education needs to be protected, and funding continues so that current and future students can have the same opportunities for success that I was given. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ryan, and thank you for your service. Up next is Greg Cerera, and I don't know if I said your last name right at all.
That's okay. Good evening, Chairwoman Austin, Chairwoman Walker, and members of the Appropriation Committee. My name is Greg Carrar, and I am a fundraiser at Southern Connecticut State University, but I am also in the President of the State University of Administrative Faculty and ASME Bargaining Unit. I represent administrative faculty at our state universities and at the Border Regions and System Office. We have more than eight hundred members working as administrative faculty at Western, Central, Eastern, and Southern and the System Office for the CSU system. Our members work in student-facing positions. I'm sure you and your families have seen them in admissions, the registrar office, financial aid, student advising, as well as administrative areas like IT, finance, alumni affairs, and fundraising. We are CSU employees who provide those smiling faces and student experiences that our graduates will remember long after graduation with our faculty. We are also the ones who provide behind-the-scenes support and services to students and colleagues, making it all possible. Today, I'm testifying to request that the Appropriations Committee look to find ways to enhance the funding for the CSU system. Not only to help alleviate the impact COVID-19 has had on our system, but also to fix existing structural funding problems that's been in existence for decades. An investment in the CSU system is an investment in Connecticut's future. We have continually seen drops in the percentage of total revenue to state the university's system, and is now down to almost thirty-one percent of our operating expenses, and is derived from the state compared to forty-four percent in two thousand and four. So this is placing an unusually high burden on our students, many of who come from underprivileged families and communities. From our perspective, continued reduction in state support result unfair burden on our students' quality. Despite these challenging times, SWOOF members have gone the extra mile of creative ways to maintain the possible service to our students. In fact, I'd like to make the statement that our hall directors are our first responders. They are our unsurrows. So on a typical day, let me tell you what a hall director does. I know we have teachers. I know we have nurses. I know we have police and first responders. But our hall directors, they'll interact with two hundred and forty-plus students. They'll deliver meals to those students, and among academic issues, pursuits. They'll help them get through personal crises, and they'll support the students in quarantine in isolation residence halls due to COVID exposure or diagnosis. And imagine this, they do the rounds in those COVID danger zones. Think about that. They're in those environments with two hundred and forty students when they have COVID. They truly are the unsung heroes the students need right now. And frankly, it's almost criminal that our hall directors have not been able to obtain vaccinations like their counterparts at other institutions. Beyond COVID, beyond getting our hall directors access to the vaccine, and beyond the current contract negotiations, additional resources must be allocated to CSU so that we're able to provide our students with the educational opportunities they deserve. We believe easing the financial burden on CSU through greater support will allow the system to put a tuition increase, investment innovation, and seek additional opportunities for public-private collaborations, and will shape the future of the workforce. The CSU system has many obligations to the students of Connecticut. We, my members, and the teaching faculty are the heart of the CSU system. We're the people in the trenches every day making sure CSU works. And we're the reason Connecticut's daughters and sons choose to attend our state universities. We owe it to them not to make them feel second-class when they see the level of funding allocated to our system's big brother, the other state system, up in stores. We know their funding's larger than ours. I'm here tonight instead of spending time with my family because tonight, like on many nights, I'm putting CSU students first. So I ask you to join me in that effort by increasing funding to the Connecticut State University and College System. Remember, when funding our system, that almost eighty-nine percent of our students stay, work, and live in Connecticut. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Greg. Appreciate it. Up next is Ruby Blackman.
Good evening, Congresswoman Austin, Chairwoman Walker, and members of the Appropriation Committee. My name is Ruby Blackman. I live in New Britain, and I have recently retired from my position as a process and technician at Central Connecticut State University. I am also the President of ASME Council for Local 196, which represents four hundred and fifty state administrative clerical workers in your region, including more than two hundred and seventy-five staff at UConn Health Center. Together, we are asking you to support the governor's funding proposal and his funding proposal in his proposed budget. UConn Health Center deserves even greater funding as that we can maintain UConn Health Center as Connecticut's flagship teaching hospital. The members of ASME Local 196 are the administrative backbone of our great public hospital. They are often the first person that visitors see and will interact with everyone in the hospital, including patients, family, doctors, nurses, and many more. ASME Local 196 members are the administrative backbone of our great public hospital. They interact with everyone who touches this hospital, including the patients, family, doctors, nurses, and so many more. For the last several years, frontline workers have been concerned about the possibility of the health center being privatized. UConn Health is the state's only public hospital and provides many benefits to our citizens, including many who cannot afford treatments in private hospitals. We have continuously been partners in protecting UConn Health and servicing our communities and our views. Public-private partnership is a fancy term of privatization. Privatization will undermine the public mission and public obligation of this great university, as well as risk negatively impacting the service provided. We are asking for a monitarium on any privatization for any facilities for at least two years. This will allow management and label an opportunity to work together to adjust and for costs of COVID-19 and future when the pandemic is over. On behalf of ASME Local 196 and all the union members here today, please work with us to help UConn Health Center operate as a public hospital that serves the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ruby. Appreciate that. Up next is Patricia Harity.
Yes, hi. Good evening. I'm Tricia Harity. I'm the Executive Director of the Northwestern Connecticut Area Health Education Center. Our friends and family refer to us as AHEC. And Northwestern AHEC is one of the four regional centers that comprise the Connecticut AHEC Network with a program office up at the UConn Health, UConn Health. So first, I want to thank you, this committee's support for your supportive programs that provide healthcare resources to Connecticut's most vulnerable communities. The Connecticut AHEC's mission is to reduce health disparities, and the strategy we use is healthcare workforce development. AHEC takes a pipeline approach. We work with high school, college, and health profession students, and we provide them training and community-based experiences that prepare them to be the next generation of health professionals who are ready to address health disparities. So I did submit a one-pager on AHEC, which lists all of our programs and impact that we have in the state. So I don't want to use my time here to reiterate what's on that handout, but I wanted to focus the rest of my comments on just taking time to reflect on the importance of the healthcare workforce development. So AHEC has been doing healthcare workforce development for 24/7 for over 20 years, really building an infrastructure in the state that allows Connecticut to meet healthcare needs and challenges. And the importance of this work is never more evident than during times of crisis such as the COVID-19 pandemic. So I wanted to just applaud this body's foresight and commitment to supporting healthcare workforce development. Because of AHEC's longstanding work in the state, our strength of partnerships and the programs that we've been running for years, we really were able very quickly in March to pivot and apply our resources towards the challenges that were coming up because of COVID. A couple examples, we were able to get volunteers to testing sites as they were being stood up earlier in the year. We're working with vaccination just now to provide volunteers and support that effort. And I'm especially proud, as early as April or May, we had geriatric outreach programs in the works. We had our students reaching out to senior citizens who were locked out of their senior centers because of the shutdowns due to COVID, really just checking in on seniors, making sure they had the 411 on COVID, and they were able to get food, and their housing was secure, and pharmacy, things like that. So really providing that connection for our seniors. So I'm just going to conclude by thanking you again for your past and current support of the Connecticut AHEC Network. And of course, we would not be able to continue our programs without the state funding that you provide. So thank you, and I hope you have a pleasant evening.
Thank you very much, Tricia. Appreciate it. Up next is Adam Perrin.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Austin.
Thank you, Representative Walker. I'm just letting you know, I had someone call me Congresswoman tonight, just like they called you Congresswoman last night. So we're both in the same bucket now. Adam, you're all set.
Hi, good evening. Hi, I'm Dr. Adam Perrin. I'm a family physician with UConn Health. And I thank the members of the Appropriations Committee for holding this hearing and for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here tonight as a primary care clinician member of the UConn Health family to ask that your support continue unabated and that you include language in this budget that creates a two-year moratorium on privatization. I come before you as a citizen of Middlefield, Connecticut, as well as an employee and faculty member of UConn Health. I was drawn to UConn Health, in particular to the School of Medicine, because of its excellent reputation as a public institution dedicated to the production of highly skilled and empathetic healthcare providers, many of whom dedicate their careers to the care of destitute and underserved populations. I came to UConn Health with the understanding that it was the only public academic medical center in the state dedicated to the provision of care for the neediest and most vulnerable people in our state. What has impressed me most is UConn Health's unwavering support of the production of primary care providers, an ongoing process of which our dean is hugely supportive. An example of this support has manifested itself in the formation of our Primary Care Loan Program, which was designed to support the aspirations of UConn School of Medicine students interested in the career in primary care. Perhaps the most impressive manifestation of UConn Health's dedication to understanding and serving our neediest state residents is our Urban Service Track, a program of the Connecticut Area Health Education Center. UST scholars who are drawn from six different healthcare disciplines follow an interprofessional educational track designed to support students who are interested in working in urban and underserved settings. UST scholars receive targeted education on how to take care of vulnerable populations such as the elderly, homeless, veterans, and refugees, and are given ample opportunity to apply their newly acquired knowledge and clinical skills in a variety of community settings and areas of high medical need. All told, the UConn School of Medicine is a state medical school whose dedication to the professional development of in-state residents has been unwavering. If we want to invest in future healthcare and in keeping physicians in the state, we need to continue to support our campus. Right now, students from Connecticut represent a great majority of the classes, and UConn Health is truly the most vital institution for our next generation of doctors. UConn graduates of the School of Medicine contribute significantly to the state physician workforce. So please support UConn Health and its mission to serve our students and all of our Connecticut citizens with cutting-edge medical care, focusing on our citizens' needs rather than on their ability to pay, which is likely not to happen if we partner with a private enterprise. I feel strongly that UConn should remain public and free to fulfill its intended mission. Give us the chance, and we will continue to make you proud. I urge you to support a two-year moratorium on privatization so we can recover from the impact of the pandemic, continue to innovate, and engage in strategic planning for the future. State funding for UConn is a wise and practical investment in Connecticut's future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your testimony. Have a good evening. Thank you. Next, we have Ibrahim Eli.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I would like to thank the members of the Appropriation Committee for holding this hearing and for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Ibrahim Lali. I'm Assistant Professor of Medicine and a nephrologist, teaching and practicing at UConn Health and the President of UCAC UP. We represent over 600 physicians, dentists, and researchers who are faculty members at the UConn School of Medicine, School of Dental Medicine, and research scientists at UConn Health. UConn Health is the only public academic medical center in the state of Connecticut. It's nationally recognized on different venues, including medical education, innovation, clinical research, and attracts scientists from all over the world. UConn Health would be profitable with employee fringe rates comparable to neighboring institutions if it wasn't for the state-imposed surcharges amounting to almost $53 million in fiscal year 2021 to cover Connecticut's historic unfunded liability cost. UConn Health provides essential public access to world-class clinical care for all Connecticut citizens, including those uneducated, the underinsured, and the uninsured. UConn Health ultimately generates more than $2.2 billion in statewide economic impact every year. Our researchers are awarded over $100 million in grants annually. UConn Health houses the state's only public dental clinic. Our medical and dental schools train tomorrow's physicians, dentists, and researchers, the single largest source of Connecticut's healthcare professionals living and working in the state. UConn Health provides opportunities for affordable medical and dental education, reducing healthcare delivery disparity. UConn Health is a public academic healthcare delivery and a bioscience hub, part of the bigger picture.
Ibrahim, can you wrap up your three minutes, please? Thank you.
Okay. Please consider supporting a two-year moratorium on any privatization effort or discussion. Please allow us to take the time to work with the administration and the development of a strategic plan reflecting innovation and ideas for expansion of services. Now more than ever, our public academic medical center is vital to the future of Connecticut and beyond. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Michael Baldwin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Okay, sorry I don't have video. So my name is Mike, sorry. My name is Michael Baldwin. I'm a proud graduate of UConn and the University of Connecticut School of Medicine. I currently practice clinically as a physician at UConn Health, and I'm also a proud educator at the School of Medicine. In full disclosure, my wife also practices at UConn Health as a physician, and we met while in medical school at UConn. Our marriage and children were unforeseen, and so far, the greatest benefit of going to medical school in Farmington. We've chosen to dedicate our professional lives to ensure we do our part to make UConn Health successful and give back to the residents of Connecticut that have given us so much. Our UConn colleagues served on the front lines in the fight to care for critically ill patients here in our home state over the past year. We work tirelessly on behalf of our fellow Connecticut residents, and I'll forever be proud of our efforts. We are true to our in those challenging days and months. In our efforts to care for our patients and keep our caregivers safe, we fostered stronger bond at stores campus, as well as with surrounding Connecticut communities and small businesses. We work with our physics and engineering partners in stores, as well as in Connecticut small businesses, to help make protective equipment for our frontline workers. We hope to continue to strengthen these collaborative bonds between the stores and Farmington campuses in the future as they proved immediately beneficial over the past years. During that time, we kept teaching the future physicians and dentists of Connecticut. We successfully graduated the schools of medicine and dental medicine on time, and I have no doubt we are able to give them the educational foundation they will need to be successful in their future careers. I personally believe medical and scientific professionals are the leaders that our communities, states, and country require in these unsure times. I believe there is no better investment our state can make than investing in the education and training of future medical and scientific professionals that care for us, keep us well-informed with ongoing research, and safe. I believe my professional colleagues warrant the consideration and respect of an earnest conversation about UConn Health's future. We're striving to ensure UConn Health is successful and are fully committed to make changes that make future success a reality for our institution. Toward that goal, I echo what my colleagues have said tonight and request that the state institute a two-year moratorium on exploration of privatization of UConn Health. Like many of our fellow Connecticut healthcare institutions, businesses, and residents, we're still recovering from the economic stresses of the pandemic, and I'm confident that if we all work together, we can ensure UConn Health will be prepared for our next test. Truth be told, my wife and I benefited greatly by the investment Connecticut made in us. I believe we were and continue to be a smart investment. Indeed, I believe we, along with our colleagues at UConn Health, are worth future investments by our fellow Connecticut residents. The faculty and staff at UConn Health will continue to work hard in the coming months and years to reward that investment with the provision of high-quality healthcare for all our residents, scientific research, and the outstanding education of the future medical and dental professions that will care for our state. Admittedly, I'm biased, but I believe our state is simply better off with a vibrant public UConn Health Center at its heart. Admittedly, my life is full with the positive effects of UConn Health. However, I see those same positive effects in the lives of our patients, their families, our staff, and our wonderful students every day. Let's work together to ensure UConn Health continues to positively affect the health and lives of Connecticut residents in the future. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. Rona Free.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Rona Free, President of the University of St. Joseph, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to testify on House Bill 6439 to express support for funding of the Roberta Willis Scholarship Program. Governor Lamont has proposed flat funding this program in fiscal years '22 and '23 at $33.3 million in each year. Last year, the governor allocated $6.8 million towards the Roberta Willis Scholarship Program from the governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund for a total of $40.1 million. I am requesting that the appropriation in the biennium be increased accordingly to $40.1 million each year so that students and institutions are not faced with a reduction in financial aid this fall. The Roberta Willis Scholarship Program is a critical component of the financial support that USJ students receive, supplementing their aid from the federal government and from the university itself. Almost all of our undergraduates receive aid from our own scholarship funds, and last year, 45% of our first-year students were eligible for federal Pell Grants based on their family incomes. In addition, 120 USJ undergraduates did receive Roberta Willis Scholarship Program funds. But because of the limited allocation to USJ, only 16.3% of those who qualified based solely on need received the funds. These are students who are critical to meeting workforce needs in the state. In a recent graduating class, 11% earned degrees in the sciences, 49% earned degrees as healthcare practitioners, 13% as social workers, and 10% as teachers. While University of St. Joseph students graduate with below-average debt and have earnings that allow them to pay their loans, resulting in one of the lowest default rates of any college in the state, they need these Roberta Willis grant dollars to make college affordable. In addition, offering them Roberta Willis Scholarship Funds encourages students to stay in Connecticut for college. More than half of Connecticut's high school graduates leave the state to attend college, making Connecticut the third-largest exporter of college students in the U.S. The Roberta Willis Scholarship Program helps to keep USJ students and all Connecticut students in-state for college, ultimately making them more likely to join the Connecticut workforce once they earn their degrees. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony and advocacy. Thank you, and have a good evening. Next, we have Chris DiFrancesco.
Yes, hi. Thank you.
Hi.
My name is Chris DiFrancesco, and I'm a nearly 14-year employee of UConn Health. I'm a communication specialist, and admittedly, that's not high on the spectrum of importance when it comes to comparing the life-saving care many of my colleagues provide daily. Still, one of my responsibilities is to communicate the good, if not great, that takes place at the state's only public academic medical center. For example, did you know last summer, providers from UConn Health's Multiple Sclerosis Center were out in the community, leading an effort to get food and supplies to shut-ins with disability or suppressed immune system, and arranging for mobile COVID-19 testing at a supportive housing complex? And now, this is before testing had become widely available. And by the way, one of those providers, the head of our MS Center, Dr. Jaime Imetola, was chosen by the National MS Society to help come up with the guidelines for the COVID-19 vaccine for MS patients. A few months earlier, one of UConn Health's leading physician scientists, Dr. Cato Lorenzen, who, by the way, brings in an extraordinary amount of grant funding for his work in biomedical engineering, came out with what we're pretty sure was the first study published in a peer-reviewed journal that showed communities of color are more vulnerable to coronavirus infection and mortality. And I should also mention, Dr. Lorenzen's Connecticut Convergence Institute for Translation and Regenerative Engineering submitted a patent application for a method of using facial recognition and 3D printing to fabricate custom mask frames, giving conventional masks the optimal protective qualities of N95 respirators. And six weeks after that, came a licensing deal with a Connecticut manufacturer to produce them. And one of the many things put on hold last year was the New Britain EMS Academy's one-year training program for its next class of paramedics. The trainees needed an emergency department to shadow doctors and nurses, and the UConn John Dempsey Hospital ED, which never shut down, welcomed them and enabled those students to complete their training in the fall. And if you're familiar with the need for paramedics in our state, then you'll understand the importance of this. Really, it's only fitting, though, if you think about it. UConn Health was where the very first class of paramedics in New England trained back in 1975. And it almost goes without saying, UConn Health's role in testing for and vaccinating against COVID-19. By the end of this week, UConn Health will have administered more than 25,000 doses. These, of course, are just a few examples of the value UConn Health brings to the people of Connecticut. The reality is, not all aspects of UConn Health's missions of patient care, education, and research are lucrative, but they are necessary, and the people in our state depend on them. Ask yourself how much of what I just shared with you would take place at a private hospital that might focus a little less on patients and people and a little more on profits. I ask you to keep this in mind, and please consider prioritizing our state's only public academic medical center, keeping it public, and addressing the unfunded liability that weighs on the institution's finances. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today, and thank you for your service to our citizenry.
Thank you, and thank you, whoops, am I, oh, thank you, sir, and thank you for your advocacy and for staying late to make sure that you get your voices heard. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next, we have Bill Garrity. And then after Bill Garrity, John O'Connor.
Thank you, Representative Walker.
Chris DiFrancesco is a tough act to follow. I'm very happy to have him in my group. I'd like to speak on 6439 today. Senator Austin, Representative Walker, and members of the Appropriations Committee, thank you very much for having me. My name is Bill Garrity. I'm a registered nurse with more than 25 years' experience in bedside nursing. I was elected as President of University Health Professionals Local 3837, and I'm serving my third term in that capacity. I'm also an AFT Connecticut Vice President and Divisional Vice President for Healthcare. As the UHP President, I represent over 2,800 members of UConn Health. It's time for another budget, and I'm back here again to ask you not to privatize my hospital. UConn Health is the only public hospital in the state of Connecticut. We treat everyone. Like every other institution, we've had our difficulty through COVID. And again, talk of privatization is looming. These healthcare heroes do not feel like they're being treated that way right now. Labor unions are working right now to come together to settle our upcoming contracts, give us this time to work together to supporting a two-year moratorium on any discussions of privatization. I've testified to this before, the public-private partnership, the private part takes all the profit, and the public part will shoulder any loss. I'd like you to look at what's going on through Texas right now. Privatization of public services and deregulation is not the way to go. But I find it easier to even ask you to look at large healthcare systems in our own state closing services. This is what I fear we will be facing if we go ahead and follow down that road. Thank you all for the opportunity to testify today. And I miss being in one room together with you guys. I really do.
Thank you. Thank you for staying for your testimony, and thank you for your advocacy, and I definitely hear you. We all hear you. Thank you. John O'Connor? You are the last person to testify, sir.
Is that right? Okay, well, I'll be quick. Dear members of the Appropriations Committee, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is John O'Connor, and I'm a professor in the Sociology Department at Central Connecticut State University. I've been teaching at Central for 17 years, and teaching at Central has been a joy, right? The students are engaged, and they're eager to learn. They're racially and ethnically diverse, and many of them, the first in their families to attend a college or a university. It's a great job. I understand that this committee has a difficult job, and is so much more difficult in the shadow of a global pandemic and an economic contraction. I just want to remind you in a respectful and friendly way that the decisions that this committee makes has real consequences. At my time at CCSU, I've taught hundreds of students, and I just want to tell you about two of them. In the spring of 2014, in my social problems class, I had a young Latino student from East Hoffett, whose last name was Feliciano. This student was the first in his family to go to college, and he was a brilliant student. He could think, he could write, he wasn't afraid to read, and he wasn't afraid to argue. He wanted to learn, and it was a pleasure to have in class. In fact, his presence made my class better. He was an impressive young man. In the spring of 2017, this student took another class with me, but he quickly stopped coming and withdrew shortly after. I finally got ahold of him, and I asked him what was going on, and he told me that he and his family couldn't afford it any longer. His financial aid wasn't enough, and the tuition and fees just kept going up, and he had to drop out. My student got priced out. He got pushed out because he couldn't afford school. I soon lost contact with him, and he became one of the state of Connecticut's higher ed disappeared. He vanished without a trace, without a degree. I had another student. His last name was Havannick. He was an undergrad and a graduate student at Central. This student was serious and talented. He worked incredibly hard inside the classroom and was a talented young man. He was estranged from his family during the time that I knew him, and that meant that he had to spend his time surfing from the couches of his friends and living in his car. This student used to shower before classes in the first-floor bathroom at Basset Hall. Like many students, he was only able to go to school thanks to loans and financial aid. He received his BA and quickly moved on to graduate study in the International Studies Program at CCSU. But after a couple of years of trying to get graduate-level courses, and they had been cut due to decline in funding, he decided to drop out. He could no longer afford school, and his level of debt was exploding. He didn't get an MA, but he had more than, I think, $40,000 of debt. There are many more names and stories that I could tell you. I could tell you about students with the names like Bellamonte, Cassell, and Rodriguez, far too many. Far too many others who had been priced out of a university education. They were white, they were black, and brown. What has happened to these students is horrific. Public higher education has become so expensive that they have been excluded and shut out. They had the drive, the intelligence, and the talent to succeed, but they just didn't have the money. The decisions that this committee makes, the allocations of funds for public higher ed, impacts the lives of all sorts of students. This committee can open doors, but this committee can also close doors. Keep those doors open. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for your testimony and sharing your stories. It is going to be hard, but we've got to find a way. So that is the end of our testimonies for the higher ed public hearing tonight. I want to thank everybody that has stayed on. I want to thank everybody who testified. I especially want to thank the students who came and shared their stories with us, too.
What do we have tomorrow, Madam Chairman, woman? What's tomorrow's schedule?
Tomorrow's schedule... Oh, Madam Administrator is right there. She can tell you.
Tomorrow, we have the Human Services Agency presentations. We have DCF in the morning starting at 10:00, and in the afternoon, we have the Department of Aging and Disability Services at 1:00, followed by DSS at 1:30. We also, tomorrow afternoon, have a Regulation and Protection Subcommittee Work Session.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice evening and see you tomorrow.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Well, the team has done a great job. Ally, Eddie, Chris, Liz, all of them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.